Thank you for coming to tonight's special board meeting on the budget. And can I have the pledge of allegiance, Mr. Plagen?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. I am the Republic of which stands one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So I just want to remind everybody that today is only the presentation of the school budget. The board will not be voting on the budget tonight. This is simply a presentation by our superintendent, Dr. Garcia. And the comments, you are welcome to sign up for comments, but the comments are only on the school budget.
There's no evidence.
No, they revise it. They revise it here because we didn't have public comment.
Dr. Garcia?
No, I have the other one.
Is that fake? That's fake. That'll work. Good. Give me the click. So we have a new mechanism. Let's hit this once. Okay. Ms. Madam Chair, let me know when you're ready. Good evening. Members of the Board of Education, staff, parents, community members, thank you for joining here tonight. All the principals and administrators, thank you for being here. Parents also. It's really a pleasure to see all of you here tonight. Auntie Ma, Principal, great for being here. Tonight we have the opportunity to present to the Board of Education the proposed budget for the 2016-2017 school year. We have the opportunity to hear about our priorities, our goal, and how the budget is aligned to our goal and our priority. We'll try to answer your questions, and we also have the Director of Finance, Mr. Johnson, that is integral part in developing this budget, that will be able to join me in answering your questions. Before we start talking about the budget percent numbers and cost drivers, I think it's important also to talk about what makes us align our budget to what we do. What helps with our decision? As we look at our budget and we develop our plan, what is guiding our decision in our budget? What guided the decision of the principal as they develop their budget in the school? And where guided our mission, our vision, our theory of action, and our goals? And although I'm not going to read the entire mission of the school district, I do want to say that we're committed to making sure that our student has equitable access to high-quality education. And as we develop our budget, we take a look at that. We want students to graduate, to be competent, and ready for college and career. So that's our purpose. Our mission is our purpose. That's why we're here, to make sure that kids can graduate, ready for college and career. And then our vision. What do we want to become? What kind of school system do we want to become? And that guide our decision also. And we want to become a school system where every student, every day in every classroom, will be deeply engaged in their learning. Not some days, sometime, it's every day in your classroom. And that's very challenging. And then how do we get there? How do we accomplish our purpose? And how do we accomplish our vision through our theory of action? And we are very clear and very sound in our theory of action. We have had a theory of action that said, in order to do this, here are the following strategies. We want to have a culturally relevant instruction in every classroom. We want to have stronger hiring practices. We want to support teachers and administrators. And we want to have accountability, internal and external accountability based on data. And we definitely want to have parental engagement. So we have our strategy to get there. And we say if we can do this, then we'll be able to know the achievement gap, and our students will be successful. Something that is very, very important to us and to all of, and to the community is what are our goals? I remember a year ago, two years ago, we had so many goals. Today, we only have four goals. And these are the goals that drive what we do. We have one goal that says students. Students will be prepared for college and career. That's our goal. We want all students to be equipped with 21st century skills. That's our goal. Then we have a goal to staff, and that includes teacher, staff, administrators. We want to build their capacity. We want to develop a culture of trust that is very, very important, a culture of collaboration, transparency, and support teachers, staff to increase student achievement. We want to build that culture. Then we have a goal that deals with family and community engagement. This is a goal that is ongoing. We always want to make sure that we bring strong partnership with parents and community. And very responsive partnership and meaningful partnership with parents and community. And then we have a goal of operations that is also crucial to student achievement. Although we have instruction as our key, what happened in the buildings is also important to student achievement. And so we want to make sure that we're guided by best practices as we ensure that we're having effective operation in order to guide our instruction. So those are the four, four goals that we have. And those goals are permeated out through our strategic plan and in our budget. So I think just want to make sure that we're aware of our journey. We'll just start with those in pre-K, and go to elementary, and then we move into the middle school, and then we get them to the high school, and that's our journey. And we want them to be prepared, and this budget should serve that purpose. Those, I think I want to bring your attention. Enrollment is increasing in our district. And although it's not increasing drastically, I think the story behind here is that the needs are increasing. The numbers may not be increasing drastically, but the needs of our students are increasing. And that is important as we look at enrollment. We're making tremendous effort to make sure that we reduce the population in special education through different programs in the district, that we have more support for ELO. But as we receive students, the needs of our students are to increase, and that's crucial because it does affect the budget. So let's talk about our budget priorities for 2016-2017. And we'll talk a little bit about the budget priorities in 2015 and 16, and how those are aligned to 2016 and 2017. So this budget will be used to support, to assist these priorities that we have for the district. The first one that we have here is expand college learning opportunities for all high school students. As you know, the high school of today is a high school that will prepare students to be successful in college and career. And we know that one size does not fit all. We know that one size does not fit all. So we know that we have to have as many options as possible for students at high school. And we want to expand those opportunities at the high school. We also want to develop our social studies and science curriculum maps. We want our social science, social studies and science program to be a very vigorous program. We had experience this year with the ELO and Math, Mathematics, Maps, that have been very successful, that will be revised. But the learning experience from developing those maps internally has been a very positive learning experiences. So I am very happy to announce that we just started the process in social studies, and I believe we started science Monday. The process in science in Monday. So we want to continue, we just started, we want that process to continue all through next year, developing social studies and science maps six through 12. I mentioned before that we want to have many options for high school students as possible. We also are looking into institute in the high school, the IB program, called the International Baccalaureate Program. As we have wind-up echo for students at this particular time, we want to have program all through the spectrum to meet the needs of students. The International Baccalaureate Program is a program, I would not say similar to IB, but a program that is offer advanced studies for students. I use the word redesign of the district bilingual program, is top priorities. Maybe that's not the appropriate word, because maybe starting all over with a bilingual program. But as our students' population increases in the district, also increases the needs of our students, this is a program that we have to think about and implement. As you know, the district years ago had a wonderful, a wonderful bilingual program in the state. I use the word investigate the development of a K-2 A dual-language school. I use the word investigate because we do have Compañeros program in this district. We have a very successful Compañeros program in this district, but it is a program at several schools, located at several schools. And because it is a program located at several schools, we cannot see the outcome that we want to see, or we cannot meet the needs of all these students. So this is a program that we should have as a united and unified one program in the district. Implement a musical instrument program at the elementary level. This is also a program that is very dear to my heart. I think music is important to our kids. I love music myself personally. And our kids get to see instrument the first time in the middle school. That does not help the program at the high school. If we want to have a stronger music program at the high school and at the middle school, it's important to start that program at the elementary school. I think my elementary principals will support that initiative. And then we want to build teacher and principal capacity. This takes new skills, new knowledge to do this job. We are a learning organization, not only students are learning, teachers are learning, but we also have to build the capacity of all administrators, which includes superintendent. And we want to continue the initiative that we started last year that we know are giving us results. We have evidence that these initiatives are giving us results. So our K-12 reading initiative, as you know, we have a K-12 reading initiative. At the lower level, K-2, we have foundation skills of reading. Three through five, we have close reading. And six through 12, close reading. And we are reaping the results of that initiative is making progress in the school district. So that's an initiative that need to continue. The curriculum maps initiative will continue. We started ELO and Math last year, they will continue with revision, and we're starting now social studies and science. K-12 professional development opportunities, we have a coaching model in place. Our school have a data team, a math coach, and an ELO. We want to continue that embedded professional development in addition with some others. We want to enhance instructional technology in the classroom. We have smart boards, we're looking at updating new computers. So we want to change the design of technology to make sure we can enhance instructional technology in the classroom. And we want to make sure that we have meaningful opportunity for parents. So these are some initiatives from last year that we want to continue investing in these initiatives. I will say to you that the budget, the operating budget, will allow us the opportunity to continue with the initiative from last year and to start the new initiative in order to serve our student. We can see that the future will be bright for our students. So how do we get there? We need to have some strategies to get to achieve all these initiatives. And we have four strategies that we will work on, that the budget will support. Provide students with equitable access to a rigorous instructional program, build the capacity for growth, provide opportunities for families to be actively engaged, and create a culture of performance and efficiency. So our budget is the tool that's going to support us in continuing with our focus, that we really have our focus, our direction that will lead us to improvement. I just want to take a minute to show you, because this is very important, that our initiatives are aligned to our strategies. So as we look at the first strategy that we have here, core strategy, equitable education, the initiative that we started last year plus the initiative that we will continue this year are aligned to those. The ECO program, this is already in place, the reading initiative already in place, the assessment program, international baccalaureate that we're looking at expanding, we're starting the music program. So all the initiatives are aligned to our strategy. Our second strategy is build the capacity of staff for growth. We have the coaching model that we want to continue, the data team process that we want to continue, the close reading. We want to also start a very responsive environment for staff, and we want to focus next year on more targeted professional development. The third strategy that we have is to provide opportunities for families to be actively engaged in the school. And the initiatives that we have there also support us. We want to provide timely information. We want to celebrate diversity and cultural understanding, strengthen partnership, and establish assistance for families to have access to information. And the last core strategy that we have is a culture of efficiency. One area that we are working and will continue to work is to recruit, develop, and retain high-quality teachers, ensure that all students have teachers that have technology in their classroom, resources for the 21st century, and align the development of people, time, and funding to the teaching needs of the school. So the strategies that we have in place all are aligned to our initiatives. So now here is the numbers, and here is the money. Here is the budget that we need to support our strategies and our initiative. And so how is the budget funded? So we have three sources of funding in our budget. Three sources of funding. The first source is local, local funding, our taxpayers, 35.6%. The second is state funding, the ECS that come from the state of Connecticut, 40%. And the third source of funding is state and federal grants. So we have three sources of funding. So here is what we receive and how we receive our money. And there is the amount that we are projecting to receive this year from the three different How is the budget spent? So how do we spend that 61 million dollars that you just saw? 81.7% of our budget goes to school, go to education. 81.7% of our budget goes to schools. 18.3% go to central services. That would include administrators, administration, et cetera, et cetera, supplies, equipment, et cetera. But 81.7 of our budget goes to schools, support schools. And how do we allocate our tax dollars? How is this 61 million dollars allocated? As you can see, the highest percentage of our money, our budget, goes to the elementary school, and rightly so. We have several elementary schools. The next school that receive a high percent of that budget, central services, then we have high school, and we have middle school. So here you have how that 61 million dollar is allocated. First, elementary school, central services, high school, middle school. And then we have transportation, special education tuition, regular tuition, et cetera. How is the money in the elementary school spent? So now we go, not school by school, but area by area. So we have the elementary budget, and how is that spent? Rightly so, the majority of the budget goes to instruction. The majority of the elementary budget goes to instruction, 58%. And then we have support services. That will be all the support services that you have at the schools. And then we have a principal office that include the principal, the comments are at the end. Okay, let me finish it. And then we have facilities and maintenance. Then we have the middle school budget. Again, 50% of the middle school budget goes to instruction. Then another percent, a very high percent, 23%, go to support, principal office, maintenance. The middle school and the high school has the co-curricular activities like athletics and non-athletics, so those also have a percentage there. At the high school, we also have, 41.6% goes to instruction. We have a large amount of the budget of the high school that got to support. 28% of the high school budget goes to support. Well, the high school also have co-curricular athletics and co-curricular non-athletics that also is a big percent of their budget.
I know, I know it's your comments, but can you just tell me what is support? I just want to know what's the difference between that and maintenance?
So support will include, for example, interventionists, tutors, et cetera. Central services. And at central services you have here, that only central office administrators, secretaries, facilities, et cetera. So you have personnel and benefits there, that is 62%, operation expenses, maintenance, insurance, adult education, and legal. What are the cost driver in our budget? What is, why the increases in this budget? The number one increase in our budget is contractual salaries. The number one increase in our budget and the highest cost driver in our budget are contractual salaries of all employees. And that would be the highest cost driver in any budget, in any school district, in any state, will be contractual salaries. The second is tuition. We have a large percent of students that are placed out of district to include special ed and non-special ed. Transportation is one of our highest also cost driver, is very, very high. And we have maintenance and other miscellaneous. These are the high-cost drivers in our budget for this year. That could be a little bit different from last year. So let me give you some changes, either decreases or increases in our budget from last year. So of course salary is going to increase. And salary does not decrease, salary goes up. So that's one of the costs, one of the changes in our budget, as you can see, about 3.3% increase in the budget. Benefits due to the changes that we had in head plan, we're not seeing an increase in health insurance for this year. Tuition is an increase also. We have a lot of students that are placed out of district. Transportation is definitely another increase that we have. And we have other contractor services such as copy machines and others around the district. And buildings and operation, operation buildings, definitely, as you know, electricity goes up. What else goes up? Oil, what else goes up? Wine?
Oil and wine.
Okay. Oh, good. So what are the proposed reduction for this budget? At this particular time, we have two proposed reduction. One is add administrative position, and two, non-certified staff on the budget. So these are the only reduction we have at this particular time in the budget. But we do have some increases in the budget. So here are the additional increases that we're looking at the budget. We're looking at a music teacher. We have to, if we're going to establish an instrument program, definitely we will need music teacher. We're looking at the bilingual program. If we are to bring back our bilingual program, we will need some additional bilingual teachers for that. At the high school, our Windham ECO program is going to be going to its second year. So we're looking at adding 50 students to that program for next year. That will mean that we will need some teachers at the high school in mathematics and in workplace learning. We want to continue to improve in technology and improve our internet capacity. So those are one of the main drivers. There are some other position that we might be looking, maybe tutors, interventionists, but these will be the certified staff that we're looking at this particular time. I want to go back. We have not reduced any staffing position of this budget, not one. So I want to be clear. Not one teaching position has been cut. How are we able to afford all of these initiatives? And Chris, this is where you're going to help me. Saving and health benefits. The district has been very prudent in making sure that we're working on efficiencies. And that has been one of my goals since day one, that we work on efficiencies in order to bring those efficiencies back to the classroom. So saving and health benefits, savings and workers' compensation, and saving and pension contribution are these, are the resources that we're using those savings to put it back into the classroom. The requested general fund budget for 2016-2017 is 46,436,360, an increase of 3% over the So members of the Board of Education, what will this budget do for us? This budget will definitely provide a rigorous curriculum for our students. We will continue with our algebra at the middle school. We'll try to implement reverse programs such as some IB courses at the high school. And that goes with my number two, provide early college opportunity for high school students. One of our goal, one of our main objective that we want to accomplish. Definitely, the K-12 music and arts program. Again, starting instrument earlier in the elementary school. The development of the K-12 dual-language program. Maybe right now we'll look at K-8. We want to make sure, we have a very successful program, Compañeros are very successful. But in order for it to be successful and to move it to the next level, we need to have a K-12 dual-language program. Strengthen administrators and teacher capacity. The budget will serve, the 2016 and 2017 budget will serve as a tool for achieving the vision of the school district. Making sure that every student is engaged over there in the classroom and that they graduate college and career ready. The 2016 budget will serve as a tool for achieving the goal of the school district. We have four goals. Keep those in mind. Staffs, students, operation, and community. And the 2016-2017 budget will serve as a tool for achieving the educational progress of our school district. A week ago, I presented some data to you that showed that we're making some gains in reading and Math, K-12. We want to continue those gains, not only in ELO and Math, but we want to move those to social studies and science. Thank you very much for your attention. Before I leave, I do want to thank all the principals that are here tonight. I want to thank you for your support, and all the teachers that are here. I thank you for working on your budget and presenting to us, and hopefully you will have the same budget that was presented to me. So thank you, thank you very much.
Any questions for the board members?
Do you have a project for the public?
Yes, yes, we have a project. Did I give it up? You may have given the question. I was there, did I give it?
I just want to reinforce what Dr. Garcia said. The primary drivers of our budget are our teacher and staff salary increases. Those are contractual, and they average about 3%. Primarily, it's driven by the certified teaching staff, and we have maintained the head count there. And part of that is to maintain and attract teachers. We think that the adequate funding of the staff salaries is paramount because otherwise we will lose too many teachers to other districts. So we've tried to support that piece of the budget. The other drivers are, as she said, transportation. We have contractual increases there as well of 3% from MNJ, as well as we needed to fund some preschool and midday runs. Also, the third point that's a cost driver, as you mentioned, was maintenance and repair and maintenance contracts. And those are primarily driven for the need of maintaining our buildings, and also to pay for maintenance contracts that relate to those buildings. Those were cut last year, and we restored those budgets to where they need to be to keep the buildings and facilities safe and efficient. There were some other increases, instructional supplies, textbooks. Barrows needed to get some additional textbooks, which they didn't have last year, so that drove some of the textbook spending. Aside from that, I think we've covered pretty much the major ones. Tuition remains steady, fortunately, as well as special ed. Both special ed and regular tuition, we see, we see as fairly steady state at this point. So at this point, also our revenue picture seems stable, as Dr. Garcia pointed out. The ECS funding is flat, as it has been for quite some time now. State and federal grants, aside from capital grants, have been steady. And the amount, the total grant picture is about 15 million dollars to supplement our budget. So I think at this point, I'll turn it over to any questions people have.
Thank you, Chris. John?
Okay. Savings on health benefits. How'd you come up with the savings on health benefits?
Well, what I used to do, the health benefits is Lockton, our health benefits consultant, provide me forecasts year over year. provide me forecasts year over year. And those forecasts were flat. So that's what I entered into the budget. I used the same load factor for health benefits as I did in this year's budget, 1617, which was about 27.5% of budgeted salaries. And that, based on Lockton's forecast, should be sufficient to cover our, our health benefits, life, dental, and prescription.
How was our use of our policies last year? Did we stay pretty much in line? I mean, here's a, for instance, I was meeting with some people in Mansfield. The Board of Education members over there said that their rate's going up 17% this year because they had a lot of excessive use of their policies last year. How?
Well, they might, they might be fully insured, John.
No, they, they said they were, they said they were sub insured. I didn't think.
Then it also depends on the insurance that you have on excess, on excess claims. The cap bar is at 180. So we did have quite a few extra last year, but it's, it's gone back down to normal levels. We're in a better spot now than we are last year. It peaked at year end. Unfortunately, we had a few very severe cases which pushed our claims up. But we've, we've, we've covered those by contributions by the board and the town. I mean, the board, obviously. We, we both contribute.
Okay. And how about the savings on workman's comp? Because that was a new thing that we just passed.
I didn't build that really into the budget, only because I wanted to at least establish a reserve for those claims. From a, on a cash basis, they did come in much better than, because we were fully insured by Karma. This past year, 1415, we moved over to self-insured, fully self-insured workman's comp. And that's provided us a lot of benefits so far. And we hope to continue that. But it's a lot to do with safety committees and working with the different groups to make sure that, you know, now it's, it's more beholden on to us to manage that risk. So we do need to set money aside. So the bottom line is this year...
At least the money stays in the community, though.
Yes. It stays in our bank account versus, versus being paid out to Karma who has the, the money in their bank account.
And we haven't get a receipt that we paid.
And, yeah, we invest that money. They don't invest that money.
Yeah. So we're able to get a double benefit. Savings on pension contributions.
Yep. Yes. So last year, we looked into a better way to fund the town's non-certified pensions. Those were basically annuities that we bought. And for a long time, I think 20 or 30 years, it's just been ethna annuities. And they provide a very low rate of return. So that the board has, has to increase pension contributions year after year by $30,000, $40,000. What we've done is, and that was the majority, not majority, but a large part of the portfolio was this fixed income annuity, which was about 45%, only returning us about 2% per annum, when typically a portfolio that's diversified will return 6%. So what's, what's happened is that, that's caused us to force, to have to, us put more money in. Since the portfolio isn't working as hard, we've had to contribute more to make sure that the pensioners have their benefits. What we did now is we took that 45% and moved it to Morgan Stanley, who now have a diversified portfolio against that 45% versus. And so we pay all of the new retirees out of that fund. And all the people that are already retired, we pay out of the old money we've already set aside against those, against those pensions. So that, that's helped, I would say that probably will save us $30,000 to $40,000 a year.
Yeah. Well, those are three major efficiencies that we've developed in the last four or five years. So it's good to see that's working.
Some of them happened, you know, before I got here. The health benefits, I think you helped implement. And that's worked really well for the town. They've established a reserve of between 20 and 25% that, you know, in case, in case there's really a bad year, we have the money to, to cover it. And also with workman's comp, as long as we stay on top of the risk element of it, it should, it should work well, too.
Okay.
And pensions, I mean, I, I think that's a, a good one, too, to diversify the portfolio and get out of the fixed income.
All right. Thank you. One more question for Dr. Garcia. The wild card's always been special ed.
Yes, yes.
And last year, we started to implement a program that we brought more of the students back. Is that, it looks like it's continuing again this year. Could you?
Definitely.
Expand on that?
We brought the program last year, one at the high school and one at the middle school. The program has been successful on both angles. Academically, the program that we're providing to student instruction is rigorous to their level. And we're seeing changes in behavior in those students. On the financial arena, it had provided some statements also. But as you said, the wild card is special ed. We may bring back 16 students and we may get 20 new students in. So we'll have to continue to expand the program to meet the needs of our students and our community. We like having the students back at home. As said before, is it working financially and academically for us?
Great. Super. Thank you.
How many students did you bring back?
Currently, we have 16 students, rightly, Anne? 16?
We have 15.
15. Yes.
Eight, seven at the high school.
Seven at the high school. And we're looking to bring back about the same amount next year.
Thank you.
With one exception, we want to start something at the elementary school also.
Any other questions? Mrs. Limber?
Dr. Garcia, in your presentation and the packet that was delivered to us on Friday, it said that you wanted to increase instructional music in the elementary level. When I was going through the packet, I noticed that at Sweeney, a portion of teacher, the music teacher is being reduced. And I also noticed that nowhere in the entire district was maintenance and repair or instructional supplies increased in the music department. And I'm wondering how we're going to increase instrumental music. We have instruments that have been sitting for five or six years unused.
Well, first...
That are going to need to be reconditioned. I'm just asking.
Yeah. So the first one, the schedule of the instrument, that's a schedule issue that's going to take place at the elementary school. The principals will be scheduling instrument, music instrument at their school. So I'm leaving that up to them and where they, where they put it and when they put it. My job as superintendent is to support them in obtaining the instrument that they need in order to move, move the program forward. Although you may not see that particular line, we do have line item maintenance of equipment. And so we will, so we'll be able to put those maintenance. We don't have the exact number, but it will pass us. But we're very positive and confident that we can meet those needs.
Right. But the maintenance and repair line in not a single school in the entire district has increased. And the instructional supplies have not increased. And at schools like Natchog and Sweeney, there is .5 or less of a music teacher. That's a concern to add instrumental music.
We haven't, we haven't created any teacher at Sweeney.
No. We, one person was moved from .6 to .4, like you noted. And also, there is an error. I, I did not put an FTE for Natchog. And there is an FTE there. So I'm going to be adding that back.
I have Natchog at .5, but no gym teacher.
For music? No, there's, I, I forgot to put the FTE in there, which is...
He forgot to put the FTE for Natchog. So no teacher has been cut.
So no teacher. It's only a reduction from .6 to .4 for Sweeney that you noted.
I have a full-time, I have, I have 1.0 music.
Yeah. So we haven't cut no music teacher.
I have, I have a .8 art.
Art must be the switch, yeah.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Kiss, for correcting me on that. I must have misread it. I'm sorry. And then the other thing, well, anyways, if we're adding instructional music at the elementary level, instrumental music, I'm sorry, I'm not seeing any increases to be able to support that in the budget. The other question I had just to start was, also you said that you wanted to increase the Companeros program, the K-8, which used to be a K-12. Why did we go from eight, 12 down to eight?
No, what I said is we want to investigate a K-8 dual-language school.
Right. That's the Companeros program. That's our dual-language program. Last year, it was a K-12 dual lang...
No, it's due to their...
It was a K-12. It's listed as K-12.
Oh. So maybe it was a K-12 last year.
It's mistaken last year's budget.
Maybe it's mistaken last year's budget, but it was a K-8.
So we've a K-8 budget. But in this year's budget, we are cutting from the numbers. This is all I had to go on because there was no other narrative to go with it. At North Wyndham, which is where the Companeros program is, it has $180,000 reduction in the Companeros program.
Oh, I just wanted to say that I tried to do...
That's what the numbers say.
I know. I granted it. That's what it says. But I want to explain it to you. It's because I didn't break out the previous year's budget into two pieces. I only broke out the new year from the schedule, from the budget report that I printed out. And he had ESOL, bilingual, and Companeros combined, which I put as the comparison, when in fact, I should have broken out the Companeros out of the previous year. So I will, I will correct that.
Where's the $180,000 reduction coming from then?
It's, it should go down, that, 180 should go down into the other, should be consolidated with the other line. I think it's a, it's a certified versus Companeros in the ESOL bilingual area.
So last year, your budget was much smaller.
Budget bracket was much smaller.
Yeah, it was much smaller. So this year, at the request of the board and the community, we decided to really take it by program. So you have each line item by program.
And just one more note on, on North Wyndham. There is one position in that area that's going over to PSD, out of the general fund into the grant. So that's also impacting that comparison. Not only the breakout of the previous year, but the movement of that one person out of the general fund into the grant, PSD.
All right. I'm still confused. I'm sorry. And I need to be able to understand this. Under North Wyndham, on page 26 in the budget booklet that was delivered to our house on Friday. Page 26. About halfway down, it says ESL bilingual, instruction, Companeros. Certified personnel, 148, 282. And that goes straight across. Certified personnel, Companeros. Last year, it was $1,70,941. This year, it's 827,322, which is a reduction of 180,619.
What I'm saying is Tracy, net the two against each other, because I didn't reclassify the previous year correctly. I didn't break out the $1,700,000 into two components.
What were the two components?
Certified personnel or ESOL bilingual versus Companeros.
Companeros, so two different programs.
Because the report that I printed out had all three elements combined. It had ESOL bilingual and Companeros, all three of them together. The budget, the budget file that I, the worksheet itself had it broken out. So I counted the people and counted the salaries.
Can you email it to me? Maybe I can understand it better if I can say it that way.
No, it's just that the comparison is, is, is not proper because I didn't break out the non-Companeros people for the previous year. If I had done it, this would have been a cleaner comparison. And the net change would have been $41,000, which I, which is the one at the bottom. The one, the $41,000, you see that $41,000 reduction?
Yes, yes, I see that.
For the ESOL bilingual and Companeros, that represents the shift of a position out to a grant.
Okay.
But I will give you the detail.
If you could just give me the breakout so I can see the numbers. It might make it more clear in my head. That's all. And the other thing is, can we get some Companeros information for the middle school? I know there is the program through eighth grade now. And I didn't see anything listed in the budget line items at the middle school for the Companeros program.
Sure.
Dr. Sue, you had a question?
No, he, I think he just answered it. So, so this, this budget detail is general fund budget doesn't include the grants?
This is just general fund right here.
Yeah, okay. So the $41,230, we haven't actually reduced the amount of...
No, we've moved, we've shifted a position out.
We've moved a position to, to grants.
To PSD, exactly.
Okay.
And, and the, and it has, the comparison has to be proper in that I break out bilingual and ESOL out of Companeros for the previous year. You know, as you can see, it's a lot more detail this year. We broke it out programmatically for you to see. And I think that highlights a lot of things that weren't easy to see the last year or the year before.
It doesn't, it doesn't because we're either doing a full funds budget or a general funds budget. And if you're talking about how much money are we spending on, on bilingual education, it really ought to include all the money, not just the general fund money. Because we look at this and you can't tell how much money we're spending on bilingual education.
I agree.
Well, you asked, you asked for additional information, I think, on, which I'll provide to you, as far as each major grant and the spending, you know, like Commissioners Network, like PSD, like Alliance, like Title I, Title II, Title III. How, I'll, I'll provide more detail so that you can see what that, what that component is.
But I almost need to get this budget on a spreadsheet so that if I want to put pieces together, I can do it.
I was not able to find it in any shape or form on the district website either.
What's that?
The budget.
It's not on, it's not on here.
Tomorrow morning.
It's not on here.
Thank you, Carrie. I, I just looked for it because somebody had a question for me. And I thought maybe it'd be more searchable on, like on Excel's website. Thank you, Carrie.
No. So I'll, I'll go work through it with Liz Baumgartner to make sure I get it right as far as year to year. It's just a new thing for me. And I'm trying to get a handle on it.
Any other questions?
Please tell me other things. I have more questions if nobody else does.
One at a time, though.
Yep. The salaries for the district on page 71 of our packet, Dr. Garcia is taking a $62,440 pay cut?
Of course. She's decided she wanted to give us back that money.
That's great. She's giving a third of her pay back to the district. I thought that was spectacular.
She's being very generous. Yeah. Actually, that's, that is, we are allocating a certain percentage of her salary to a grant.
To a grant.
Which is...
The special master grant.
The special master's grant.
Okay. Well, $50,000 of the special master fund was initially supposed to go to Dr. Garcia's salary. So $62,000 of it is, if that is a decision of the financial guru, then that's your decision. But what happens...
Well, it's just the guidelines of the grant allow it. That's what we worked through.
What happens when that grant goes away?
Excuse me?
What happens when that grant goes away? It's only guaranteed through the third year of her contract, her initial contract.
But that's the decision of the board, what they want to do with that later on.
It would come back, obviously.
Okay.
Yeah.
So that's probably not a good move, then?
Well, let's just say it supports the initiatives of that grant.
It's a concern for me that at the end of this third year, we have to find more than $62,000 by that point in order to, in order to fully fund Dr. Garcia's grant.
Assuming, assuming the legislature doesn't renew any of the special master grant funding, which could happen, what could not happen? We have to, talk about the interesting thing about the resolution that this state board of education passed when we hired Dr. Garcia is, is it runs until 2019.
Right.
Which means there's, there's an assumption there that something will happen. Some unstated something will happen after the first three years runs out. So we're going to have to go back to the legislature and find out what they, what they want to do.
When I met with Commissioner Pryor and we initially did that, it was supposed to be 750. I don't know where the $50,000 went to. I'm not worried about it at this point. But when we initially did the 750, when we initially did the 750, it was for the three years of the contract. And that's what the agreement with the State Department of Ed. I'm just concerned that we have technically one more year. And then we have to find a $62,000 again. The other questions I had was the middle school administrator salaries and the building administrators. Do we really have four administrators working for $405,000? Or are we having a reduction?
You have four, you have four administrators at the middle school?
Yes. And they're making $405,000 combined?
Yeah.
Okay. Because that's a reduction of $12,000, according to your numbers.
Well, let's...
Isn't that a reduction? Explain to her where we allocated last year differently.
In, in the end of the line, it has parentheses around it. And the numbers add up to a reduction. To me, that's a reduction. I need to have clarification on where that's coming from. And if at, anytime in the future, we have to replace that. So it's a reduction.
It is.
Of $12,000. And then the same thing at Barrows. We have three administrators for $413,744. There's nothing to compare it to last year because we only had one. I understand that.
Yeah. No, that's, again, the, the 2.3 million in operating grants that we get covers the CHB staff to a large degree. And we were able to move more people, seven more people into the operating grant than we did last year. So that's not a reduction in staff. That's a, just a moving, a movement to the operating grant out of the general fund. We were fortunate enough to have, you know, people come in at lower salaries. So we were able to move more people into that grant versus fewer people at higher salaries. So it worked out.
I'm just asking.
No, no, I mean, this is excellent, excellent.
By blanks and empty spaces. My other, my next question, what are we going to do without Geraldine come July 1st? Because on page 73, there is zeros where the personnel line items are.
She's not handed in the resignation. Don't worry.
The entire department is going by the looks of it.
You know, people ask what type, what's jeopardized when certain grants go away. And one of the things naturally is the Alliance grant. And the Alliance grant, one of the four areas it covers is the Office of Talent Management, which is essentially the HR department.
HR personnel, yeah.
And until that time, we are carrying the people in the Alliance grant. Again, when that day comes, when we lose that funding and it's no longer there, that is a significant impact to the general fund, yes.
But there's nothing listed on page 71 under personnel. What does that mean?
That means that the personnel are in the grant. That means that the personnel are in the grant. All of the staff are being paid out of the grant, as they have been for the last two years.
And how much longer are we guaranteed this grant?
We don't know.
Alliance...
Alliance, we don't know.
I think it's, I don't know the amount of years, but because we're 30, one of 30 districts that are very needy, I want to say.
I understand that the Alliance is great, but...
And I don't think that need is going away, unless the state is facing monumental difficulties.
So the entire department is paid for out of that grant?
Correct, and we also moved one more expense, was reduced, I think, or went to the grant, and that was Teach for America. You'll notice the contract services declined there as well, and that contract is now being paid for out of grant funding, so no longer, we had budgeted for this year in there, in the personnel area, but we moved it to where it could be expended in a grant.
So we talked at the last board meeting, and Dr. Sewell agreed with me that we should be moving things from grants into general fund, but really, this budget is moving things from general fund into grant in a large part.
I think things move both ways in any given year.
You can't have a budget of 3%, and don't make some changes, so if you guys want a budget beyond 3%, we can move all of those, but then your budget would be 5% or 6% or 7%.
Why are we not asking for a budget that takes care of the needs of this district and the needs of the children, and letting the Board of Finance and the voters cut it if they don't think that that's what we need?
That's a decision of the board, that's, we follow your guidelines.
Okay, so when was that decision made?
Would you...
I don't remember having a vote of the board of a percentage to ask for.
Do you guys have a finance committee in the board?
We have a committee, committees don't take action, committees make recommendations.
And that's what we recommended.
Yes.
Because, but the board still has an opportunity, we're not voting on it tonight.
No, I understand that.
On the other hand, while you're correct about not using the grant money to pay for personnel, at this point, we have the grant money. And if we moved everybody into general fund money and asked the taxpayers to pay for it, what then would we do with the grant money that would otherwise be freed up?
I don't think we should move everything into Board of Ed funds and leave the grant money out there, but I think that we should be careful and be thoughtful, maybe more thoughtful than we're being, because every other year, we seem to have a panic when a grant goes away. I think we need to be more thoughtful about moving, let me finish please, the money from the grants into our general fund, and less of moving things, including entire departments, into a grant or leaving it in a grant, we should start making that motion of moving it away from grant funding and into...
Well, the question is, some grants renew routinely, Title I, Title III.
Right.
And some do not. We know that the Commissioners Network grant is going to go.
Right.
It's the same as a few years ago, when we had school improvement grants at both the high school and Natchog, which actually were larger than the amount of money we're looking at now, and when those grants end without renewal, then we are going to have to retrench. The Alliance grant is $2.5 million, $2.4 million.
Right, excellent.
That's the one that's, you know, somewhat more interesting, because if the state doesn't renew all or most of that, we and 29 other districts are going to be up to our eyeballs in difficulty. I mean, I'm not ready to ask the taxpayers for another $2.4 million just yet, because I suspect the state's not going to abandon 30 school districts, you know, over the edge. We'd like to wait and see what the legislature decides to do before we panic. I mean, we'll get some warning. I really don't see that it's likely that the legislature is going to pull the plug entirely on 30 school districts.
I don't disagree with you, I don't think they're going, I don't necessarily disagree with you, but I just think that we should be prepared to start moving, maybe in thirds or something like that, 800,000 a year, and asking for a little more.
I don't disagree with that. We already know that we have some opportunities to create additional cost savings within the current operation. The thing is, it's going to take a year or two, in fact, last week, we talked about a three-year plan for the reduction in the cost of administrative services, right? That will allow us to transfer some of those positions from grant money back to general fund money.
And if I may add to your question, that we have a plan, we have to start looking at the grants that we know will expire in the near future, like the Commissioners Network's grant.
Right.
And we already have a plan of how we will transition that the next three years, because we know that that one will expire. So the grants that we already have knowledge that will expire on a particular date, we are making a plan of three years of how to move those personnel from that grant over to another location.
I noticed that in our budget, and I don't know if this is Dr. Garcia or Mr. Johnson, food services, information technology, and performance and evaluation, I didn't notice them listed anywhere. They're listed on our district website as departments, but there's no budget that I could find listed anywhere within the...
Food services is a business, it's an enterprise fund, it's not budgeted.
That's generally what I thought, they're kind of revenue neutral anyways, they pay for themselves.
At least revenue neutral, but it also provides a small profit each year that they use to buy capital equipment out of, like soaks.
It's a surplus, we're a nonprofit business here, it's a surplus.
It's, right.
Right, I understand that.
It's a small, the feds allow a small surplus of a certain percent to be kept by food services. And what was the other department?
Information technology, Brendan, and I noticed that in all of our buildings, there's a little bit for technology, but I didn't see like a salary or an office figure anywhere.
Oh, that's interesting. IT, I think, I just have centrally here, it's not allocated out.
So you have it at the high school or at central office?
I have it at central office, not allocated out, but I guess we could allocate out dedicated resources to the schools.
I didn't see anywhere in this.
No, no, IT is not listed at the middle school or the high school.
It's in the central services.
It's all in the central services, but that's a great idea, if we want to allocate that out.
And performance and evaluation, Katie's position, are we renewing that for this coming year?
That's under grant.
Katie's is also under the Alliance grant, along with the...
But that's not listed anywhere here, so this isn't a full funds budget, because it lists the grants, but it doesn't account for them.
Well, in a sense, it has it in the front, but it doesn't have them broken out specifically, yes.
Here's a concern, I don't know, Dr. Sewell, you've kind of voiced something similar to me, they should all be listed if we're going to call it a full funds budget?
Sure.
Because later on, when the fund goes, when the grants go away, we have to be able to say...
I have the FTEs and what they do in each one of the grants.
You know, we can fund it for next year.
Dr. Sewell asked for that to be included, so I'll include that for next week.
Perfect, thank you. Oh, utilities. The Natchog went from $45,000 this year in utilities to $72,000. That's a $27,000 increase.
I will have to look into that for you. I think I took Wayne's estimates of fuel consumption, gas or electricity.
I know gas and fuel has gone down, so I mean, and I understand some increases, you know, some things go up, the kids leave the lights on, whatever.
Which one was it, Natchog again?
Natchog utilities went from $45,000 to $72,000, and then...
I'll have to look at that one.
On the flip side of that, the high school went from $280,000 to $203,500, so it reduced $76,500. And the one other place, because I was a part of this for a while, the one other place that I think that we should be receiving a savings is the middle school. The microgrid's supposed to go online as of August 31st, otherwise, we're not eligible for the grant funding, so we should be able to see it, we have $303,501 listed last year and this year. For the middle school, we should be able to realize some kind of a savings once that microgrid goes online. And that's not reflected anywhere in any of our numbers.
Did not factor in the microgrid efficiencies, but can.
But, well, it's just, if we're going to have an honest budget, I think that we should make sure and really give an honest budget.
Agreed, I didn't consider that, to be honest.
Well, projections of the microgrid wouldn't make it an honest budget, because this hasn't been realized yet.
They have the projections, the Microgrid Committee has the projections of what the realization should be, and I'm not saying we have to go whole hog, it would be great to have a little bit of a surplus at the end of the year, but I think that an honest number, and I'm not saying that you're being dishonest, it just wasn't thought of when we were putting this together, I totally get it, but a number that reflects the savings that we should realize at some point.
Yes.
Okay, and I don't know Wayne or the Microgrid Committee, or I'm sure somebody, Town Hall.
I'm sure you can help me out with that.
I know at some point Sweden and the middle school will kind of be combined in their utilities for a while too, because of this project, so...
Yeah, I think Wayne's been doing an excellent job in trying to reduce our utility consumption, especially at Barrows, he's had people take a look and see what we can do there, because that's really one of our biggest utility users.
Oh, yeah, Barrows had listed $61,000.
Mrs. Lambert, I really would like to hear from the, if you can email your question.
I emailed some questions, and I got a response at 4:30 today, so I don't know how long it's going to take to get another response, so I want to ask my questions now. We have to vote on this next week, and I'm not going to see Dr. Garcia or Chris Johnson before then, so I would really like the opportunity to ask a few more questions, if I may.
How many questions you have?
Three or four.
Let them go.
Yeah, Barrows had $6,100 listed for utilities for this year, down from $7,000.
Yeah, that's basically, it's just, that's fuel for a tank that they have out there, but the tuition monies cover the utilities, if you go into, if you go...
I went into Barrows, it was very confusing.
Yeah, it is confusing, because it's funded by three to four different revenue streams.
Right.
One is the general fund, one is the operating grant, which is 2.3 million, one is the tuition monies, which is over a million dollars. The state gives us $7,000 per out-of-district and $3,000 per in-district student.
Right.
Then, we also, and then there's also special ed services and billings and collections that happen there, as well as a federal grant. But if you want to go look at the utilities for Barrows...
Please tell me that I missed something, I'd be thrilled to see that.
You did, I'm surprised you did, but you did.
Well, I tried, it's my, I am elected to sit here and make sure that we give them the best budget we can.
If you go to...
On page 37, it says utilities, which is kind of the overview page.
No, no, you have to, yeah, this could be better laid out, and I'll have to think about this, just because there's so many different pieces to it. Utilities is on page 43 for Barrows, and it is 6,100, which is just, I think, the fuel tank there, 160,000 is the electricity bill there. I think it's because they couldn't put gas lines through, everything there runs on electricity, and it's a very large building running on electricity, even though it has very sophisticated control systems. The, on a cold winter, it can cost a lot of money.
So the entire utilities for Barrows is 166,100?
Yes, and that's paid for against the tuition billings, but that are on the GL of Eastcon, in fact. So I'm including, to keep it complete, I wanted to have, you see that piece?
Is climate control system at Barrows a heat pump?
That I don't know.
Wayne may know that.
Wayne, do you know something about the...
Is climate control at Barrows heat pump? Because if it is, it'd be electrical.
Excuse me, what was the question?
Is the climate control system at Barrows basically heat pump?
Yes and no. The primary heat source is radiant hot water heat in panels above the windows. The backup or secondary heat source is heat pumps.
Okay, and so if it gets cold enough, heat pump gets supplemented by electrical, correct?
No, if it gets cold enough, the electrical hot water heat is supplemented by the heat pump.
Well, he...
Yes, it's much more efficient, and that's one of the discussions we're having with the builder, and they're, at this point, they're reluctant to sign off on changing the operation of the building from the primary being the hot water radiant heat to the primary being the heat pump. We're looking at, I've got bids out, no, not bids, quotes from people to look at that system, to see where we can make some savings and changes.
But the reason we're getting an electric bill is not so much because we don't have gas lines there, but because the system basically uses electricity when it needs to, is that correct?
Yes, because the water in the system, instead of being heated by a gas boiler, is heated by an electric resistance oil.
Yeah, yeah. That's what I thought. So if it gets cold enough, we're going to pay an extra electric bill, is basically what?
Last year, during the cold winter months, it was $30,000 a month.
Yes, and the projections, the projections in the building that the consultants gave to the building committee, the maximum monthly charge was projected at $6,000 a month.
Oops.
Little big difference there.
But last winter was not, was very unusual in its severity.
Well, yeah, but I think there's some question as to whether or not we've actually got it set up in the most efficient way that we could, but correct. At any rate, right now, it is what it is from a budget point of view, but that's why it's an electric bill.
Thank you, Wayne.
I'd like to suggest something now, can we go to public comments? We have a long list, and Ms. Tracy Lambert, you can ask a question later, some of them have to go, so maybe we should just allow the public to speak, and then we're going to stay anyway, so you can ask a question to them later. We have a long list of...
So you don't want me to ask any more questions?
No, no, you can ask them if they do.
Oh, no, that's fine, okay.
I mean, I want to see the public asking, okay, maybe they have to, some of them have to leave. I'm just suggesting, you may take it or not, but I would suggest that we have public comments.
Let's meet the rest.
I have nine, nine individuals signed up. Okay.
I don't have a choice, it appears, I have been silenced, so go ahead, thank you.
I don't think that was a suggestion, Mrs. Lambert.
A suggestion is a suggestion, Lambert, it's not an order. I suggested that maybe we could have public comment first before, oh, you have three or four questions more? Let her finish, and go ahead and finish, but I can suggest, can I? Thank you, then my suggestion cannot be taken on.
Do whatever you want.
Okay.
Why don't you let her finish, she's almost done.
Okay. All right, we'll move on to public comment. The first one is Alicia Lynn.
Tracy, stop playing this game, let's deal with...
I'm not playing a game, I'm an elected official, who's given the opportunity to ask questions, and now not, because they're not popular. Mrs. Lambert?
Ms. Osuba?
Please.
We'll say what we need to.
Let's just, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lambert, sorry to interrupt you.
In the beginning of the presentation, Ms. Garcia put up the graph, and it showed where we get our funding from, and a big portion of the funding, 40%, comes from the state of Connecticut. That's the piece of the puzzle that I want to speak to for just a couple of minutes. Presently, the Connecticut Coalition for Justice and Education Funding represents several districts, Wyndham is one of those districts, and they had filed a lawsuit against the state of Connecticut, that is presently being heard right now. And basically, what they have stated is that we, there are several communities, Wyndham being one of them, that lack critical resources, and as a result of this lack of resources, we have not been able to give our students adequate educational opportunities. As you mentioned in your presentation, a big chunk of that 40% is the ECS, which is the Educational Cost Sharing Grant, and one of the assertions of the lawsuit is that the formula by which Connecticut parcels out those funds is arbitrary, and not based on the actual cost of educating students in the state of Connecticut, and it's not fair across the board. So that is the basis of the lawsuit, is they want to see more equitable sharing of these funds, and that is occurring right now. So I don't think a lot of people in our community are aware of the gravity of this going on right now, and how this may potentially impact these communities that are drastically underfunded, Wyndham being one of them. So there is things that we can do as a community, and we can rally our legislatures and let them know that our students here in Wyndham deserve adequate and equitable funding. The lawsuit is supposed to wrap up by early summer, so it is presently being heard right now, and I just want to encourage all members of our community to get involved and let their legislatures know that we're behind adequate funding, equal and equitable funding for our students here in Wyndham. That portion that we get from the state is not parceled out fairly, and there's times when they don't actually even follow the ECS and leave our grant underfunded. And by their numbers, Wyndham is actually one of the most severely underfunded districts that, yes, in, of the plaintiffs right now. So I just wanted to point that out, you can get involved, you can contact our state legislatures and tell them that we want equitable funding here in Wyndham. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I have Mr. Kevin Hoxsey.
Good evening, Mr. Hoxsey.
Good evening. Kevin Hoxsey, parent, taxpayer, kid in a high school. Tracy, I want to thank you, John, I want to thank you for the questions, I just think it was right, but we'll go on. I came here tonight just to see, just to hear what goes on every budget meeting. Tonight, I... Tonight, I see it's getting a little rowdy. I have not been able to bring up the budget on my internet. I do not have any paperwork in my hand about this budget tonight, none. And I go to a lot of town meetings. I know what these budgets are. I know what the people out there ask when we go to these town meetings. I go to all of them. If these people could come here, or if they're watching online or on TV and see what's going on here, this budget ain't going to go. You people can't get along with yourself, never mind with teachers and unions and kids in the school. If we're fighting here, what's going on behind closed doors? This is ridiculous. It's like my taxes going to a circus paying for a ticket. That's what this is tonight. The other thing I want to ask, how can I vote on a budget? The NEAS program, where's the paperwork for that? They did evaluation of a high school.
They have not give us the report yet, Mr. ...
So how are we supposed to, how am I supposed to vote on something I don't even want voting on? I have no idea. And I'm not the only one out there that's asking for this. So if you're going to present a budget, an education budget, you better have this stuff in line because it's not going to pass. You're waiting, you're sitting here, you're wasting your time. This is like little kids fighting along, not letting this person speak, not letting that person speak. It's ridiculous. These guys got to come together. United we stand, divided we fall. If we're not going to come together, guess what? This ain't going to pass. Thank you.
Mr. Bill Powers?
I guess I have a mixed message here. In terms of the, the budget priorities, I think they're fantastic. I think the board has done a fabulous job of defining where the biggest needs for our kids, where they lie. And right down the line, I think it's, I think it's wonderful. However, my concerns, I've been here before about this. Tonight, I, I should say that I'm on the governance council for Wyndham Center School. I'm not representing them here tonight, but I have in the past about this same issue. Dr. Garcia was recently at the school speaking with the council about this same issue. The council asked me to speak with Mr. Johnson. I met with him a couple of months ago, maybe six weeks ago or so, yeah, about the same issue, and that is transparency. I think I, gentleman who spoke before me was sort of addressing that. The transparency, for me, has been a concern. And I think, Mr. Johnson, you have broken some things out that hadn't been broken out before. You were explaining that, and it could be confusing to some because it's hard to compare. When you take one category and break it into three, it can be a little confusing if it's new. But from my perspective, part of the transparency is this. There apparently was a packet delivered to board members with lots of detail, lots of information, that of course can't be presented in a PowerPoint, just too much. However, when I looked online too, I mean, I was trying to get my hands to be on it, to be prepared, so I could ask some reasonable questions, so that you could answer them, you know, in a way that was useful. The transparency here has been of concern in this community for a long time. And I guess one of the things that can happen is that the budget itself cannot include all of the, all of the various streams of revenue, for instance, as an example, or where every, every dollar's going to go. However, there could be some supplemental materials that are provided elsewhere that would explain some of that, so that the voters and anyone who's interested, administrators, anyone else can, can take a look at that, a closer look and understand it. I think one of the, to quote Mr. Johnson a little while ago, he was, I think, answering one of Tracy's questions, was that the revenue streams in Barrows is very difficult, very confusing to follow. Okay? And that's part of it. If it's confusing for the board to follow, it's, you can imagine what it must be like for the people in the public to be able to follow it as well. And so the transparency and effort should be made to make, make it clear where the money's going. I went out of my way to meet with Mr. Johnson to look at the state grants people, and I talked to them about where the monies were coming for special ed, for ELL, and things like that. And it was very interesting, because when I looked, went back and looked at previous budgets, I could not find, I could not trace that money. The biggest thing for our governance council was, and I'm going to use another term that you used tonight, thank you, enhance my vocabulary, it has to do with allocating out. You were talking about allocating things out. In one, I guess this had to do with information systems or, or technology. I think allocating out is very important for people in governance councils and for schools to know when a large amount of money comes from the state or anywhere else, how it's allocated to schools and how and why. And that, that's a big, is it, is it based on per student, so, so much per student? But what if you have a large number of ELL students and a large number of special ed students? Does that enhance that basic number that each student gets? Hard to find the answers to that. Finally, just a couple of other things. When you're talking about increasing, there, there, I mean, I, some of the things I saw were even increase, there was, it just said you're going to increase the bilingual staff. It doesn't say if it's going to be one, or two, or 10. And it would be, it might be interesting, it would be helpful to know what that number is and what that program's going to look like at the school level for those of us, or parents, or people in the community who are interested and believe, as I know Dr. Garcia does, and I think most of you, that it's really important. I guess, and then the final thing is the 3%. I was at the, I was at your meeting that you had, the board retreat. And in that, it came, the magic 3% came up, okay? The first speaker, the person from the public today, I'm sorry, I don't know her name, who spoke earlier, talked about the fact that we have lacked resources in this community for education for our children for a long time. It's part of the, the lawsuit that's currently working its way through the courts. Why that 3%? I just wonder why everybody was content with that 3%? Where it came from? I serve on another board, and that 3% came up as a budget as well. Just came out of, where does it come from? Why isn't, if our, if our kids need 4.5%, why isn't, aren't we going for the 4.5%? That's all I have to say. Thank you for your attention. I think I went over, thank you for not taking out the big cane and pulling me off here.
Mr. Al Korkinski?
Al Korkinski?
I think that's me. Good evening.
And I apologize for mispronouncing your last name.
What are you talking about? I screw that name up every day. So it's all right. It's Korkinski, Korkinski if you're Polish. First of all, I just want to say thank you to all the folks that are here today. It's awesome. And, you know, thank you for the opportunity to, you know, for this budget being presented. And, you know, I give a lot of praise for having this in the PowerPoint and, you know, making some things, you know, clear. I know there's been an effort, you know, on Dr. Garcia's part to do these budget workshops during the course of the last several weeks. You know, this year I wasn't able to attend all of them, a few of them, however. And oftentimes, those are very powerful. I did want to ask one quick question about the PowerPoints. Who decided to put that hair in there? Because I wondered if that was, if that's a hair or that's a design? Just a question.
The design.
Okay. I'm going to speak on the first, the first thing I really want to speak on is that I am a member of both the high school and the middle school SGC. And Bill Powers was just talking about, you know, him being involved in an SGC. And today is, is basically the first time, you know, we've had the opportunity as an SGC, both in the middle school and the high school, to actually see a, a budget from a school, on the school level, proposed. Maybe something was emailed yesterday, okay? Today, I got to say, I'd praise the folks in the middle school SGC. We got together today at 5:30 to discuss the budget that was proposed to Dr. Garcia. And I got to say, that was fantastic. We had an opportunity to discuss the numbers and to do kind of what Mr. Powers was talking about, try to understand what the allocation is, where the money, you know, where money is going, question if the needs of the students are being addressed properly. And according to the state, it's mandated that the, the SGC, while we don't have any veto power on a budget, we are here to advise. We're here to advise because somewhere along the line, this district has not done well, so therefore we have to have SGCs. So, but we did not, we haven't seen the, we didn't see the budget. We sent a letter, you know, a week or two ago about coming and supporting this budget presentation, yet we hadn't seen, we hadn't seen a budget proposed to schools. Now, I am not here to lay blame on principals, Dr. Garcia, or whatnot. But I do know that, it doesn't matter whose fault it might be, I know that there's something, something happened with the process. And with everything else, if the process, yes, Dr. Garcia, if the, how do we know that? Because something didn't happen that was supposed to. We're supposed to see the budget, proposed budget. We don't veto it. We get the opportunity to discuss, ask questions. And, you know, if the principal doesn't like anything we say, great, they can bring it up to you and, and nothing can happen to it. But that's why, it's part of a role of an SGC. And again, I'm not here to play blame, but some, something went wrong, and there's many of us who are, I have four children, we all know this, I work all this good stuff. I'm always saying this for one reason. I'm not involved in SGC to feel like I've wasted my time, but that's really how I feel. I felt that way. That being said, the meeting with the SGC meeting that we had today was fantastic around the conversation of the budget, and it, it provided us the opportunity to do what we need, to do what we need to do. Going forward, I hope this doesn't happen again. Because it only brings doubt with many, with whatever folks. I also want to speak on the fact that I've been a little disappointed being here, that it just seems that we only had two people actually asking questions about this budget today. That seems to me, for an entire board of ed, only two people asked, asked questions. Now, maybe you guys have already figured it all out beforehand, so maybe that's on, that's on me. But I would think a budget of this magnitude changes and things like that, there would be many questions. And I've asked the people that I talk to online, many know we have a Facebook page, and I'm asking people, ask questions. Because quite frankly, forget, no one likes rumors, none of us. We want facts, we want information, we want to know what is, we want, we just simply want answers. You know, we don't have to like everything. You can justify why things are happening. Just give us the information, tell us why. Give us that opportunity. I love the questions that were being asked today, and I can't wait to hear some of the other ones. And at the end of the day, all I want, and I know all that most people around here want, is a budget that we can support. I am, I have lovely work ethic that Dr. Garcia has, and I love these initiatives that are going on. And I think we need to continue to work on clarity and transparency for all of us, parents and students and staff and teachers, to be behind, to be behind the budget. It doesn't matter how pretty any of these, these things are. It doesn't matter if we don't, we can't, if we don't have any answers to questions that a board of ed member is asking on a, something who is an expert in finance and whatnot. It doesn't make a difference. If we don't get people to ride behind this vote, behind this budget, it's not passing. And as of right now, I can't, I, right now, as an SGC member and as a parent, I can't get behind anything because I just had an hour and a half to review one school's budget. Thank you. Are you calling me? Oh, okay. And I'm going to let it go. And, oh, one last thing I've got to say. I love what a lot of things that Bill Powers had to say, and he's part of the reason why I say that, that, you know, we need answers and some information, and we need an opportunity to question, to get answers, so we can tell the people who aren't here today, so we can clarify some things, so we can set the records straight. Bill Powers is the guy that for a week, maybe two weeks, was out with a stick and a flag and what, out in front of schools, making sure people budgeted. I know Mr. Flores was. We had people all over the place. It was a ginormous effort to make sure the votes get passed, the budget gets passed. If we don't get some of these things answered, if we don't have, have an opportunity to ask these questions, we may not have the same people being out there, being behind the vote, the budget and supporting it. And that would be a shame, because we all know, our students deserve everything, our students deserve the same, if not more, than any student in any part of this state. And with that, I'll be done. Thank you.
Mr. Kork... Mr. Korkinski? I don't want to mispronounce your name.
You call me Al, Dr. Garcia.
Thank you for your comments. Well, I appreciate it. And my sincere concerns and my apologies that the middle school did not share with you, but at the same time, I want to...
High school as well.
High school, congratulate the schools that did. As Mr. Powers mentioned, I, he was part of several discussion at Wyndham Center. There were several discussion at Sweeney. There were several discussion at Ner Wyndham. So I do want to congratulate the rest of the principal that did follow the process. And the process works. We just have to make sure that we hold people that are not following the rules accountable internally and externally for following. So my apologies to that, but I want to congratulate the principals that did follow the process. I think it's fair enough. Mr. Powers, I saw you one time discussing it with your SGC. So I wanted to congratulate them.
Well, that's a great job. I'm glad those SGCs were able to have a, you know, their, their meeting, you know, who knows? We have more than, we have two major schools who do that. So, you know, hopefully we're not going to have a blame game as far as that's concerned. We know that the buck stops somewhere and somehow, here's what I understand, right? The, the board of ed, I assume, has got to ask the question, has all the SGCs seen, you know, have they had an opportunity to review and discuss the budget? And then somewhere along the line, because I believe Ms. Prescott, I could be wrong, had a paper that had to be signed, that, that we reviewed and signed the budget. Now, did the board of ed see the papers for all the SGCs?
The board of ed does ask the question. The board of ed, and I have to be responsible for asking, responding that question to the board of ed, and I will give them the correct answer and the answer that is appropriate. Two schools did not see until such and such a date.
I'm sorry, that's...
I will give them the answer. Two schools did not see.
As far as who signed, as far as who signed off on the, on the paper? Okay. So I, I got you. So as far as the board of ed is concerned, then, they knew that not all the SGCs had seen the, had seen the budget, according to, okay. All right. Excellent stuff. There was something else I had, but I'm just going to let it go there. Thanks.
Next, I have Kelly Prescott.
Like Al said, I, first of all, I'm the chair of the SGC at Wyndham Middle School. I agree with a lot of what Al said. We just saw the budget a couple hours ago. We did, we were able to get together to discuss it. I was asked to sign off on it. I am refusing to do so until I have more information about the Wyndham Middle School budget. There are a few things that I'm concerned about, one of which is adding a special ed teacher to the middle school budget. I know it's not in there now, and from what I understand, you have a special ed teacher that possibly has 44 special ed students, which is a concern to me, being the parent of a special ed child. So if, if it warrants that they need a third special ed teacher, and from what I understand that they might, that should be in this, and it's not. There's also a section on here that is contract services, which says it went down 96, just over $96,000. But on your PowerPoint, when it says, "Budget changes," it went down $84,000. So I'm assuming that might have went up in other areas? I'm not sure. But anyway, I'd like a clarification, because that's $96,000 difference. These are some questions we just had with the budget.
For the middle school?
For the middle school. What was the other? There was one other thing. And one other position that was not on our budget was a tech ed teacher that was not replaced. This was the second year that we haven't had a tech ed teacher. So I know that that's...
I can answer that.
Okay.
The middle school were given that position last year. The middle school were given that position last year, and the principal took that position out of their budget. And it was not requested this year back by the principal.
Okay.
So they were given that position.
Okay, so that needs to be requested again, or no?
Keep in mind, the principal is the one that presented the budget. And if they don't put that position in their budget, and that was not placed back in the budget.
Okay, so then what does the SGC do at this point?
Okay, so, so I, I said to you that, and I explained to you the process in my email again.
Correct.
I think the principal and the SGC needs to meet. This is a building level decision with the principal and the SGC, and so the principal need to meet with the SGC and go over the budget, like any, all the other schools. I will definitely have conversation with the principal, but the principal and the SGC needs to meet and go over their, go over their budget. And you, as you said, serve as an advisor to the principal and the budget.
Correct, correct. Okay. Um, I think that was it. One thing, looking at how things were played out here tonight with everybody, it's like dealing with my children at home. It's embarrassing. It's really embarrassing. If I had to, to vote on this budget now, as a parent, I wouldn't. I wouldn't, there are too many loopholes, too many unanswered, um, it wasn't presented very well. I, I mean, even listening to the questions, listening to the, oh, I made a mistake, there's too many of those, if you're gonna present a budget, especially to parents, to staff, to the Board of Ed. It needed to be clarified, and it needed to be somewhat perfect. I know it will never be perfect, but when you're trying to answer those questions for people, you need to make it as simple as possible for all of us. Not only that, having it not online, so we can't access it, and all like, all getting just this, that, that's a big deal. I checked several times, and there, there's nothing there. Last year, I was able to go and print the whole thing out and have it for my own personal records.
We correct that immediately, Ms. Prescott.
Okay. That's it, thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Calucci?
Yes, Mary Calucci, I have a son at the high school and another son at the magnet school in Wyndham. Um, I have to say, first of all, I am disappointed in the kind of infusion of partisan politics, which is very evident on the board, and it's very troubling. You know, we really are not going to move forward as a district with this division, with one party in charge, and, you know, the kind of dysfunction that's building. And I have to say, I'm also not happy that our state rep is apparently deciding what kinds of schools we're gonna have in this district, with bills in the legislature about magnet schools for the high school, without telling us how a district that has one high school, one public high school, can make that a magnet high school. Um, I, I just don't know how that would work, and that I find this troubling.
Mrs. Calucci, can I?
Yes.
Can we stick to the budget?
As long as you stop the clock.
Well, I can stop the clock, but we're strictly discussing the budget tonight.
This has to do with the budget, because I don't know what the, the, and the partisan politics affect the budget and the support you'll have. And also, the people you decide to silence is, you know, usually very obvious what that's coming from. So the future of the high school is in the air because of actions taken without the consultation of parents who currently have students in the high school. Also, I thought that we were going to move from a per pupil allocation model of a budget, which, when I did yesterday see the high school budget, it's, still has that, that, what I would consider an accounting trick, and I, again, I, I don't know why we use I am confused about a few things, like what's grant instructional, that's twenty-four percent of the budget? What is that? Or what does it cover?
That is the piece that's state and federal operating grants.
Okay. Um, I think it looks to me like the high school does not get what it should have. I, I don't think we have enough staff in world languages at the high school, and when I saw the budget yesterday, just glancing at it, there's supposedly three Spanish teachers, and I'm not sure if there's still Mandarin, I, I don't think that's adequate for a high school.
I think Mandarin was dropped.
So, three world language teachers, I, I don't think that's adequate for a high school. I also question why we continue to contract substitute teachers out when, when we're paying an agency and not paying quality individuals who are standing and teaching our children. I, you know, they would make a better salary if we did not use a service, that's getting, that's getting, you know, a quarter of what's allocated per substitute. I also just want to say, you have created this number where the educational versus central services is eighty-one eighteen, which used to be seventy thirty, but the problem is some things are moved. So some things that used to be in central services are just moved over to the educational side of the equation. So I'm not really sure that that's a reliable, you know, division.
Well, I think we did, we pushed, we put district-wide programs, which included regular edu, um, tuition, also special ed tuition, and regular ed, and, regular ed and special ed of transportation, which are clearly student-based, not central service. We just can't allocate them to each school.
Yes. But I mean, it, it's not really that we've reduced central services, or the central office budget.
Well, I think it is inflating the central office, because those are student-based services. We couldn't get the kids to the schools unless we provided transportation, and also, the tuition piece is just, you know, that's either state mandated, or Wyndham-placed, or lottery-based.
Right, but other districts do their numbers differently, so it looks like we're spending more, say, for classrooms and teachers, whereas we're throwing in the bus, which is, in another district is put into central office, principal salaries are often considered central office because they're administrative, so I'm just saying, you can't really-
Yeah, I agree, there's different models, there's different models.
Yeah, but we shortchange the children. I, I can't help saying that. I do always support the budget because I don't want to harm the children more, but it's not adequate, really, in my mind. And also, I really do think you have to stop your partisan politicking on this board.
Good evening.
So I just wanted, first of all, support some of the things that have been said from the floor. The budget time in this town is always very, very difficult. It's difficult for parents, it's difficult for the teachers, it's difficult for administrators, it's difficult for people in the central office, and of course, it's even difficult for the children. They are aware. I mean, we, we may, we act as if, as if this is just a conversation that goes on among adults, but the children are aware of when budget time comes around, and it's tough for them, because when the budget doesn't pass, it's like we're telling them as a community that we don't believe in you. So I understand the stress, and I, and I do want to, I agree with Mr. Kozinski, that I, I see the attempt to be creative here, and to try and defend some things that are important to the education of children. But I also have to agree that I don't think the budget is, is, is good enough for, for our needs. So let me just, the first thing is, I think we need more of a narrative around some of those numbers. When I see fifty-eight percent of the money goes to instruction, twenty-six percent to support, the problem is, I mean, that sounds good, but I don't know what, what it is in other districts. Is it seventy percent instruction? Is it eighty percent? Are we actually near a state average? Are we below a state average? Is fifty-eight percent actually adequate? That, that may sound like a decent sum of one hundred percent, but it may not be. So I think we need more of a narrative around some of those numbers. And, so that was the first thing. The other thing that I think would be important, because budgets always have a kind of educational dimension, I mean, and that's where I think, where, when people call for transparency, that's what they're asking for. They're not on your side of the table, they don't get to see how decisions are made. So I think one of the things that really needs to be clarified in this budget is how much is mandatory spending, and how much is discretionary. I mean by that, how much is commanded by the laws of the state, in terms of what you have to provide to children? You know, because that's important, you know, because in this district, that's, that's one of the things that is very stressful for the school district, is that, well, obviously, we're under a lot of state mandates. We don't have a lot of discretionary funding, and that means that our kids don't get to go places, they don't get to go to museums, they don't get to do things that kids in other districts routinely get. I think that's very important to tell, that story. That's a big part of the story. It's, it, you know, if, if, if so much of what we do is compelled from outside, then we're not giving us, we're not giving our kids what they deserve. Even, even if it says fifty-eight percent, that may not mean what, what it, what it looks like. So I think that we need more of a narrative about how these, how these figures stand in relation to other school districts. And then, and then I also, I do want to speak to what I've seen here tonight, too, and I, and I very much agree with what the other parents are saying. You have a board member who's asking questions about the budget, this is what this is for, this is a forum about the budget, and you stopped that board member from asking questions. What does that look like? I think that's dreadful. I think that, first of all, it's just, it's rude. It's, it's uncivil to stop someone in the middle of questioning and to take the floor away from them. So I think, first of all, it's just bad manners. But secondly, you have to be a unified front. If you want this budget to, it's your budget, you're the people who crafted it. And if you can't support your own budget, how do you think the community is going to support it? You, once, once you've decided that it's your budget, you have to be a unified front. There's, we, we don't have room in this town for dissension on the board about a budget. Either we're all for it, or we're not. And if we're not for it, it's never gonna pass. So I, I just think that, you know, you can't bring personal concerns, politics, once you're talking about the budget. That's the biggest thing in a district when it comes to education. If you don't provide the resources, you're not helping the teachers, you're not helping the kids. And if you don't control yourself as a board, the budget won't pass. Therefore, you're hurting our kids. That's the way I look at it. And I'm, and I'm speaking strictly here as a parent. I, I just don't like what I saw tonight, because I just think that, you know, when you took the oath, you swore that you're gonna do what is right for our school district, and, and on our words.
Mr. Flores?
Okay, I want to have, first of all, a dialogue, when I want to talk, I want to have a dialogue. First of all, can you clarify, that was, I'm here, because I would think that was a presentation at this court for the community to ask question, or that was a discussion for the board between you? What was the, the purpose me to be here? To listen you fighting each other, or to listen the public, breathe their conflict? What was the agenda today? Can somebody clarify, please?
Officially, this board meeting is to have the superintendent present her budget to the Board of Education for the first time.
Well then, how you present it to us as a presentation or discussion? Let me tell you what we do in the town, uh, uh, by accident, I'm in the town council, but my real life, I'm a bus driver. In the town, in the town council, we had a meeting. We had a meeting, we discussed the budget, we don't make a big show asking question publicly, it's a show.
You, you are the right, it was like a show.
Yeah, thank you. I had Mr. Johnson email, I had Mr. Neil B. email, I had concern, I emailed back and forward, come to the public, oh, back like a dog, make a noise, and the public, that's a show. You know, every single board member, you got this, and, but a few weeks ago, you can talk to each other. And after forty years in this town, they want me, they keep me out, I went to heaven, send me back to earth, anyway. After forty years, I never see this happen. One board member, I'm talking, I'm asking the whole community, monopolize the dialogue, and Jane Florida, my wife, they bored me because she'll be home by now, waiting for hours to, to want to listen to one board member, and the teacher clap. It's a mechanism to fight, and this was the right mechanism. The question is, that you should have your private meeting to fight each other around the budget, and then when you come to the community, you let us to ask the question. Now, I know a parent, of course, no, I'm a parent, my daughter's already grew up, she went to Wyndham Tech, but now you're gonna discriminate with me, because I know a parent, I know a parent, I got nieces, nephew, blah, 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 but also a taxpayer. That means that in order to sit down here and post the term, you need to be a parent, what about taxpayer? Second point, I've been in this town for forty years, I make one mistake, three years ago, I voted against the budget, because I was mad, I was mad at somebody in this board. I voted against the budget, I regret it, I cannot stand the back. I carry that pain in my heart, because I do my, my anger. But I didn't punish anybody in this board, I punished our children. I want to share one experience I had one day with Tracy Lambert. I love Tracy Lambert, she's like my sister, to be honest. In one particular board-
Yeah, we're related. I'm his brother.
Yeah, my older brother. Now, let me tell you a story. In one board, in, in that particular budget, I voted against that budget, and Tracy Lambert was voting for that budget. She was so committed, she tried to convince me to vote there, I said, go to, you know where, I'm gonna vote no. And I remember, the first time I won, we didn't pass the budget, she kept calling me, say, Jane, do it for our children. Tracy Lambert was so committed to these children, I wish I can see the second Tracy Lambert now, committed to our children. I had some issues with people in this board, you know, but when I came to the children, that is secret.
I agree.
Now, and then, the second time, I've been here twice, the third budget passed, and she was crying, she was so happy. I saw her crying, and I cried too, because in my heart, I know that I should vote yes, I vote no. And when she, Tracy Lambert, in the town hall, crying, remember that day?
I do.
You cried because you thought I was right, support the children.
I am supporting the children.
Hmm. And now, I want to see this board. I got some issues with those guys, yes, of course. I got issues with Mr. Lambert, with my brother, Mr. French, and you know, we got a lot of big issues to address. But we came to the children, not my children, my daughter's a teacher in Indianapolis, send you to Wyndham Public School, now she goes for her master, send you to Wyndham Public School. Now, I cannot say I don't have children, I'm gonna walk away. No, I had to fight for other children. I want to encourage this board to stop behaving like Jane Florida, because that's the way I behave too, I'm guilty. I get mad, I'm guilty. I want this board to stop behaving like Jane Florida, and behave like my brother. He got a lot of issues, but he's a professional. And that's the way we're gonna move the family. This board has to pass. Now, I'm gonna ask one question to the, to the expert. Based in my numbers, the budget gonna increase one point two million around, correct?
One point three, three, three.
I'm very close. Now, I don't own a house, I, I pay rent. Let me tell you, I own a house, because I have issues with this guy. Instead, stop my calling, and let's go to the issue. If I had a house that cost hundred grand, how much increase would it be for my taxes? Somebody listen.
Um, I believe, I have to recall what the mil rate is, I think it's about eight hundred thousand per mil in this year's budget. So, we're talking about one and a half mil approximately, so that's one hundred and fifty dollars per hundred thousand in assessed value, which is seventy percent of market.
Let me, wait, wait, I got new because the town board, it's gonna be, the town board is gonna be reduced.
Then, but again, it's a package between the, you know-
Oh, the town-
The town's increase, which right now is a decrease, actually, but depending on whether or not they bring back services like leaf collection, or scurpside pickup, or, uh, street lighting, um, you know, right now, there, it's a decrease between the service district.
Yeah, it's a decrease.
No, I mean, the, the-
Okay, and the last question, Dr. Garcia, I know that was a fair presentation, right? People will have another opportunity to have question, correct? Or that's gonna be the last day of this?
This was scheduled for a presentation, uh, the, the, the budget is scheduled for approval on the night, uh, we're going to the Board of Supervised Finance on the sixteenth, so.
Because it's another meeting for the public, can be some concern, because this meeting was kidnapping by the board members. It's gonna be another opportunity for the public to address you directly, instead of waiting for the board member to go after his other throat?
Right now, at this time, it's scheduled for the night, for approval, I, I, I don't, I can't answer that question, I'll ask the board themselves.
Okay, by the way, I'm gonna be out there with my brother, Mr. Power, campaigning for the yes vote, because I don't care about Dr. Garcia, I don't care about Mr. French, I don't care about Tracy Lambert, I don't care about people behind me, I care only our children. But it's my idea for our children. I'm sorry, I'm honest, but I'm here for our children. I was a teacher, how can you be a teacher and turn their back on our children? Let's keep the difference away, and let's keep for our children, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else would like to come up and speak? Mrs. Collins?
I would. I feel like I can, like.
You, you only get a minute and a half then.
What?
You only get a minute and a half then.
I do? Oh, I'll call, really, yeah. And she can. I can talk. Okay, um, my name is Susan Collins, uh, I have a grandchild that I'm raising at the high school, and a grandchild in North Wyndham School.
And that's probably where you're willing.
And that's why, I was taking one home from basketball practice, you're absolutely right, thank you. Obviously, I have sat in your seat and gone through, I can't even count how many budgets, and how much, and how many frustrating meetings we had, and I know how difficult this is, but I just had a few things I wanted to, to mention and to ask. One is, I know you're working very hard at renovating these schools, which I am in favor of, and I believe are ver, it's very important, but my consume, my concern is- But my consume, my concern is, um, and I hope this isn't true, but are we looking at keeping this budget as low as possible? Because in a short time, we're gonna be going back to the community and asking them to vote for renovations, which is going to be a pretty big number. So I just wanna, I, I hope that's not the case, because I'm very concerned about how low this budget is and how bare this budget is. You mentioned, Dr. Garcia, that there is no reductions in teachers. When I, I co-chair the school governance council at the high school, and I have the budget. It seem, when I look at it, and I could be wrong, it looks like we're cutting back on some teachers. There used to be seven English teachers, now there are five. Are we cutting back because teachers are retiring? Are you saying to me that we're not cutting teachers, but are we not hiring teachers because of who's retired?
No, no, that's not what I said, we have not-
No, the English teachers, I just wanna tell you what impacts the English teacher trend, um, is that we moved some people into the Alliance grant, there is no decrease there. We lost Thomas Jury, and Collagen and Bowling are going-
Can't say names.
Oh, I'm sorry, and two people moved over to the, um, to a grant, so we're fully funded at the-
So you're, you're saying to me that there is no, you're not cutting-
No reduction in the English staff.
Any, well, any teachers in the high school. No teachers, there are the same amount of teachers this year as there are in the high school last year, as this year.
So we have not cut any teaching position, and I said that before.
Okay.
In this budget, we have not. However, what we will do, and I said because it could be turnover, we don't wanna cut people, and then there's turnover of teachers, um, we will look very selectively when we have to hire again because of turnovers. But we have not cut any position, because we're afraid if there's teacher turnover, we have to go back out there and hire. So at this particular time, no position is cut in the budget.
Because there's overcrowding in the teach, in the classrooms at the high school. The, the, there are lots of cla- lots of classes that have more kids than there should be in that cla- in the class. So I just wanna make sure that, you know, that we're not cutting any teachers at the high school whatsoever. Um, so that's good to hear. And there is middle school sports, is that continuing at the, at the middle school?
It's in the budget.
Okay, good. Um, so one of the other concerns I had that I wanted to say is, um, it's offensive to me to assume the statements that you make, that, um, we wanna keep this budget low because it's not gonna be passed, and the community isn't gonna be happy about a 4% increase or a 5%. Well, I'm a member of that community, and I take offense at that. Because I feel like you're assuming that no one wants to ha- increase a budget because of education. I don't think that's true. I think you should bring it to the community and say that you, we need to, we can have the most beautiful school in the world, and the most renovated school in the world, but if we don't have adequate programs, if we don't have small class sizes, if we don't offer more than one extra language to our kids, because when my kids came here, they could choose from six different languages. Now they can only choose from one. If we don't offer our kids and this community, and the parents who want, who are in this community, a quality program, in particular for the high school and, and for all the schools, then it's not gonna matter how beautiful our schools look, because no one is gonna move here, and no one's gonna come here, and no one's gonna keep their children here. So please keep that in mind. There are some of us who struggle paying their bills, but would do, the first thing that they would do is say no. What we believe in is what's in the best interest of the kids in our community, and if we have to increase our taxes, so be it, we'll have to do that. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else would like to come up?
I would like to speak, because I'm in a hurry, sorry. Because this has been taking very long.
I'm sorry, can you say your name?
My name is Sandra Ramos.
Sandra Ramos.
Um, I would like to say that this is kinda like, like she just said, that you can ask for a higher budget. So ask for it. This is for our children. Instead of remodeling and making everything so pretty like they say, remodel it, no. Bring more teachers. They want more teachers, give them more teachers, because our children deserve it. Our children deserve it. And they do deserve to have more languages, and they do deserve to have more opportunities than what anybody has spoken here about. We deserve to have our children. It's not about the Benjamins here, everybody's talking about the teachers, yeah, and the, the class, and this and that, no. We need to make sure that our children get their education, and we're not looking at that. The proposal's never gonna go by. Yeah, maybe your grant will go through, but who's hurting? Our kids. So maybe we need to step back, and maybe if this meeting will go on, if you have any questions, ask them prior. Maybe you need to, um, organize your meetings, okay? I have a baby that I gotta go run to now. The public gotta wait between y'all fighting and whatever. No. This not happening. You guys are trying to do the best that you can, but us as parents, we get frustrated too. You know? And there's a lot of things that are happening in schools that may be, we, we should all come as parents, because we all are parents. Either grandparents, parents, or whatever, or aunts or uncles or whatever. But we all need to stick together, not fight, is stick together. Because a village is together, not apart. And like the first lady that talked today, she said that the legislature is coming down on us. They're not giving us nothing, but then maybe we should all go and get something up there for our kids. Cause our kids deserve it, whether they purple, green, or yellow. That's our kids. Thank you and good night.
I, I just wanna say something to Ms. Collins. Ms. Collins, as part of the IB program, you have to have more languages, so, um, as part of the IB program, the requirement is more languages. So as we look at developing that program, we'll have to outreach for more languages.
Yes. See if Tracy's got more questions before we go on.
Mrs. Lambert, do you wanna ask your questions?
I, I would. Um, more requests, can we, first off, I wanna say that if we discussed all of this in emails separately, that's called an illegal meeting, and we could be FO'd and sued for that. So lots of this doesn't happen for me behind the scenes, I don't send emails to my board requesting things unless it's, can we add this to the agenda, which is proper? And I don't have discussions in emails privately, as some people do, because that's an illegal meeting, and I don't wanna be held responsible for that, and I don't want my board to be held responsible for that. So, um, I don't hold illegal meetings. Excuse me, Mr. Flores, I'm speaking now, thank you. I don't hold illegal meetings, um, in email, I would rather this was out and transparent for the public. Mr. Johnson, can you get me a list of positions, possibly by building, that are moved to grant? Because I went through, just looking at the numbers, like I said, um, we received this packet on Friday afternoon, um, and not before, we haven't had it for weeks, as was previously stated. We received this packet on Friday afternoon. So I only had the weekend to look at it, and I do feel like I spent a good amount of time perusing it and highlighting it and making notes, so I could ask intelligent questions tonight. But I have a list of 22.1 positions that are, I thought, being cut, and if they're being moved to grant, that's fine. But that's kind of contrary to the discussions that we've had previously about not moving positions to grant positions. So that's a concern for me. And in additional positions that are being created, I went through all the buildings in the district, and all I had was the figures, the monetary figures to go by, I had no narrative, which is fine. Um, I have seven and a half positions in total being added. The high school took the biggest hit in positions being cut or moved to grants, at seven and a half positions being cut or moved to grants, and only two and a half positions being added, which included those English positions and, um, three math positions. So those are concerns. Are some of them-
Yeah, the math positions, yeah, they were def- um, just to give you a quick rundown, and I'll get you that information, that's not much.
I just, I would like to know which ones went to grants and which ones didn't, because I wanna be certain that nothing's being cut.
Yes, again, there was, um, the Mandarin teacher, um, that left. There are two people at the English program that are moved to the Alliance grant.
Okay.
Also, three in the math that were moved, um, to Alliance, math coach, math eco, math interventionist. But I'll get you the detail behind that.
But to answer your question, I think it's important to, to realize that, that grant does pay for some of the salaries and stuff in this district.
No, I absolutely understand that.
That general budget alone does not pay.
Oh, I absolutely understand that.
And it has always paid, grant has always paid for position in this school district. So grant is a big component of salaries in this school district.
I, I totally understand.
So last year, maybe an interventionist of Sweetie, and this year, maybe an interventionist of North Wyndham. But we have reading, uh, teachers, interventionists, uh, math coaches, all of those are in particularly Alliance grant, because that's the purpose of those at that grant.
Or Title I.
Or Title I.
Right, I, I would just like to know-
And pre-K program, kindergarten extended day also for PSD is a big piece.
I understand, when I got this packet, and I see a, a $67,000 cut in a position or something like that, to me, that's a position, cause I figure a position's about $63,000, give or take, plus benefits added on to that.
Yeah, it's, um, the average is 63, 640 this year.
63, 640 is an average.
Yeah, so that's, if you have a reduction, you can use that to see how much.
Right, if I see a cut of anything around that, I assume that we're losing a position or something's happening to it. And nowhere in this was it noted that going to grant or anything like that.
Okay.
I seriously had a conniption, because I thought that we were losing, like I said, 22 positions.
No, it's, it's, I can clarify that.
Perfect, if you could get me an email or something like that.
I think that falls in line with, with Dr. Sewell's request, so I'll provide that for the next go around for the-
I, I asked, I repeated, actually, a request that we, earlier, that we get a detail on each of the grants and what the money's being spent for.
Yeah.
I've got, um, a, a separate grant system that can provide that detail, and we can summarize it.
Can that be sent to all of us, rather than only to a few?
No, it's gonna be included in the book.
It should be, it should be an appendix to the budget, I mean-
Yeah, so that you can leaf back and see, you know, what, what-
So that you can go and look at tables and see what the grant money's actually doing.
But unfortunately, I'm gonna have to get rid of the names.
Oh, no names.
Well, yeah, it's just positions and dollars at this point, it's not people.
Exactly.
There's an email that went out to the high school that had all the names listed that probably should not have gone out, not, not by you, but probably should not have gone out to the high school. The other thing is, can we get an updated, the enrollment lists that you gave to me, us tonight, do not match the ones that were on your slide? For district-wide, um, enrollment for, estimate for 2016, 2017, the numbers you gave me add up to 3,042, but the number, oh, you don't have 16, 17, okay, I'll go 15, 16, 3,002, when you have 3,356 listed, so.
And what that number has, you said?
This one has 3,356 listed for a num- total of enrollment of students.
Uh-huh.
And the one on the handout that the board received that I requested, that was emailed, was 3,002. So there's-
It's, it's outplacement, mine's include outplacement.
Okay.
And also the pre-K.
And the pre-K, right.
And pre-K is not included, so can we get an updated list?
So you can get it updated.
Yes, I, I can do that.
Yeah. So mine's include outplacement and pre-K.
Okay. Um, are ICs and coaches listed under grants fully for every building?
ICs are typically in the general fund budget, except in one location where it's allocated to the, I believe, the PSD grant, that might be NatJog.
NatJog.
Dr. Garcia, can you get us that detail?
Yeah.
Okay. And, um, sports at the middle school were completely, like, the, the stipends were completely eliminated, it says minus 21,000.
Incorrect, I put them back now.
You put them back.
Yeah, that was a, an omission by the, by the submitted, by the worksheet that was given to me, I fixed that in the meantime.
So you added the 21,200, 427 back in.
70K.
How much?
Seventy. For the middle school, yeah, it was between, between co, co and non-co, those were put back.
Yeah, I saw all the stipends were cut, and we had the average test middle school.
Yeah, the worksheet, um, had it incorrectly, so I added it back. You'll see that next week.
And the high school went up about $35,000 in athletic stipends, but we're cutting sports programs, why is-
What sports program has been cut?
The swim teams have been cut, I know that.
Okay, so let me explain that, the swim team has-
Well, but there's information that some people have that the rest of us don't have, so.
Well, the information that the rest of the board has is because a, a high school member discussed it at a town council meeting. But I have not provided any information to the rest of the board.
Okay.
So let me be clear on that. Um, the swimming team has 17 students on the, in the swimming, on the swimming team.
Right.
For years and years and years, only two students are our students. The rest of the students come from Ram and from Lyman.
Lyman, yes.
Um, we, we would like to have a sports program, but I think you and the rest of the, uh, community will agree that they should participate in paying for the-
Absolutely.
The coaches. So for years, we have paid for those coaches, and, um, I know the high school said they cut it. I, I, I have advised the high school that my decision is to have a conversation with the two superintendents, of Ram and Lyman, that we would love to have the program, but they need to participate in paying the coaches of the swimming program.
Okay.
Okay, because we only have two swimming students.
Well, that's currently.
Currently.
And we've had, we've had more in the past.
Yeah, the girls' swim team had two, and the boys had like four or something like that.
The boys have only two, only two.
Maybe two are graduating then, they had four this year.
It's, yeah, it's been higher in the past than it is now.
So, so when people says cut, I would not say necessarily cut, what I'm saying is, as a responsible citizen, we want to have the program, and I think we want to encourage our students to, the new ones to go into swimming, but I think we should not fund a swimming program for Ram and for Lyman.
No, I don't disagree. My son started out his high school career, my oldest child, at tech, cause he wanted to go into electronics, and they kicked him back, cause he couldn't take Algebra II there, to here, and he was much happier here. But I had to pay $300 for him to be able to play Coventry, play football in Coventry, cause that's where tech plays, and he didn't even play a single game because he came back here.
So I don't know what the Ram superintendent's gonna say yet, final response, or the Lyman. We're hoping, we're saying, we go on a one-third each school district, although we only have two students, but that's okay.
Okay.
Well, actually, that, that's, that's a very small budget item in total.
Yeah, it's not that big.
No. Yeah, no, I'm not saying it's a huge one, I'm just saying, it went up $35,000, and I have heard cheerleading might possibly be cut. I heard swim was already a done deal, so I'm glad that we're trying to revive it, and I want everybody to know this just happened publicly, cause my youngest son is a swimmer, I did not make this happen.
I can get you more detail around stipends.
But yeah, my, yeah, so I'm hearing that there are some sports being cut, and I would rather they didn't, and I know some sports are growing, wrestling's growing, whenever you win state championships, they grow, and that's appropriate too. So I just wanna make sure that it's being equitable to all, and I know some teams have new uniforms and stuff like that, and some don't, I wanna make sure it's equitable to everyone, that's all.
With respect to the swim team, it, it seems to me there's, there's a, we're the only high school in the region that has pool, okay? It doesn't seem to me that we take full advantage of that, in that, one of the reasons we have so few students on the swim team is that we're not arranging for, uh, or teaching enough swimming classes to generate enough interest in students and becoming members of the swim team. It's, you know, so, so we, it might behoove us to, as long as we have the, the capacity, we have the pool, uh, to think about better ways to, uh, to, to use it to benefit the students in this community. And I, well, I, while I agree that, uh, students from other high schools that, that come here to swim, uh, rightfully ought to contribute to the cost of doing so, uh, there's a certain public relations value in, in us being good citizens too, so I, so given that, in a budget of about $61 million, the swimming team is like, in total, about 26,000, that we ought, $61 million, the swimming team is like in total about 26,000, that we ought, yeah, in terms of how much we're actually putting into those two coaches, it's not very much money.
26,000?
13,000 each in coaching stipends, that's, that's the number I was given. It's not very much money, so...
13,000 or 1,300?
13,000 a year for the, for the coaches.
For the two coaches, okay.
Stipends, two of them, okay? Anyway, it's not a lot of money and therefore we can take our time thinking about what's the best thing for us to do there, we, I mean, it's, we're not gonna, we're not gonna make much of a difference in the budget if we cut it, so why, why do that?
And the feeder program, do they pay to rent our pool? We have a United Nomads program that comes and uses our pool, there used to be University Aquatic Club at UConn and now there's United Nomads, they're a youth, a youth organization that uses our pool, do they pay to rent our pool?
I'm, I'm not sure, but I'm pretty sure, but I'm not sure.
Typically, any organization from outside that comes in, we make sure that they have the proper insurance and that we also bill them for facilities use.
I'm not saying we should, you know, earn our income on the stream of young children, but if organizations are using our pool, then, you know, they should have a pay too.
No, we, we do, we work it through our, our department and we facilitate with Wayne as far as the availability of the, of the high school.
Well, if we're using that same philosophy, then Ram and Lyman should pay...
Absolutely.
For our coaches.
Absolutely, I, I assumed that they were, so I know in other towns, I just assumed that they were, when teams join up like that, usually that's how that happens.
We have been paying that, those coaches for, for many, many years.
There's, there's a way to streamline our, our budget a little bit and make it more equitable to our students and students who get to use our facilities for nothing. Where is the ECHO, I saw nothing and I know this is an Alliance thing, can we find out how much the ECHO program just costs in general? I know it's a pass-through, I know...
What do you mean, how much it costs?
General dynamics, Electric Boat gives us the money to support the ECHO program and to pay for the teachers and stuff like that?
No, 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 some of the teachers are part of our budget.
Okay.
They give us other things for the program, but the teachers are our budget at this particular time.
Can we get a break out of that?
Well, it's in high school, you, in the budget for the high school.
But I can be more specific, it's, um...
A math teacher, yeah.
I can make a note on that, footnote.
But there's high school teacher, a math teacher and an English teacher.
And there's some other supplies and trips that we budgeted, that Tim asked us to put in.
All right, I have other questions, but they can wait until next week or I can email Chris if I have them. I try not to email Dr. Garcia's staff without her permission, so, thank you. Dr. Sewell?
So, just listening to the comments and things, there's, um, I guess the first thing I'd like to do is answer Mrs. Collins' question, that the budget and the facilities plan are two separate deals. I know, I know some people will put them together in their heads, but they're two separate deals. We're, the Planning and Design Committee is working hard to produce a proposal to renovate this building which has not been renovated in 46 years. And, and if we're gonna have a 21st century high school here, renovation has to happen. And that's gonna cost what it costs. And, uh, our problem with the operating budget is trying to get a balance between meeting our educational objectives and recognizing that this is after all not a particularly affluent community. So before going to the taxpayers and asking them to dig, dig deeper in their pockets, we need to make sure that we're making the best use of the resources that we already have in terms of looking at opportunities to repurpose funds internally that are maybe not being used in the, in the, uh, most effective way to meet our, our current goals. Now, the 3% number came out, last year we proposed a 3% budget.
2.97.
Two, yeah, well, roughly 3%, I mean, and, and, uh, and so in looking at where, where we started at 4.5%, the question was, can we get down to the number that it was satisfactory last year? And, uh, we can't really go much, you know, 3% seems like, uh, that's, that's essentially the increase in our contracted services for employees and that's the biggest chunk of our budget. So 3% is really kind of the bottom. Now, that raises a legitimate question to ask, ask the board. I did ask Mr. Johnson and the superintendent to, to try and prepare a budget that would meet the superintendent's objectives and, and, and had a target value of around 3%. But if the board would like to ask for more, and I know there's some members of the public that would like to ask for more, then, then that is something that can be put to the vote of a board, the board has not voted on 3%. So if the board wants to ask for 4.5, I don't, I don't know what the Board of Finance will think of that, but if the board wants to, 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 uh, to vote on a budget next week that's, that asks for more than 3%, that's, that's an option that can be put on the table. And even though I asked as the Chair of the Budget and Finance Committee to, to target at 3%, I could see myself voting for more than 3%, but I'd like to know what the rationale would be for why we would do that, all right? If we ask for an extra percent, what would we do with it? I would like to, to put a budget out that, that, that we can pass. I would like to be fair to the taxpayers, I would like to be fair to the children. I have been following the, the Connecticut Coalition for Justice and Education funding case closely for several years. That, it's quite true that the, that the state is underfunding the, uh, underfunding the cost-sharing formula that they have, it's, it's somewhat arbitrary, but they don't even give us the amount that the formula would give us.
$3 million.
And, and the numbers that they're using are, are stuck in 2005. So even if they calculate the formula, they're not using the right numbers in it. And if, if CEGF wins the case, the state will appeal it and I'm told by people who know about these sorts of things that, that we may yet see money from that, but probably not until somewhere around 2021. We have to survive until then. So, and our legislators are well aware of the fact that the, uh, the district's basic cost-sharing grant from the state has not changed a penny since 2007. The, uh, the Alliance money is allegedly, uh, cost-sharing money that goes to 30 districts, which includes us, which is, uh, a way of increasing the, the state's cost-sharing, except as Mrs. Lambert has pointed out, there are two problems with the Alliance budget. One is it's got an expiration date, which makes it harder to plan fully, and the other is, is it's got all sorts of strings attached to it, we can't just spend it as we would like to, to meet our objectives. There are some things we can spend it for and other things that we can't spend it for. But those are the circumstances we have to operate under. Finally, I'm a big fan of the school governance councils and I'm unhappy that the governance councils have not been actively involved in the preparation of the budget.
Two schools.
Two schools.
Well, for, but that's, that's two that, I'm, I'm, you know, I understand that it hasn't happened fully and, and I, I hope that this is the last time. It's true that the student govern, that the student governance councils originally arose out of the state's concern for underperforming schools, uh, it only actually applied to two of the buildings in our district, uh, but we decided when the state passed that, that we would apply it to all of our buildings from the get-go and we want parents involved in the schools and in helping make the decisions and bringing these things forward. So it's important that the, that the governance councils have input into the budget.
Sure.
And, and I, I think the board will have to think about what we do when that doesn't happen because I think it's important that, that, uh, that the governance coun, councils actually have some, um, power, you know, some, some influence, more, you know, it's, it's not just, it's advisory, but it shouldn't be advice, it can be ignored, is basically what I'm saying. Yeah, I mean, if, if the governance councils have to accept something that they, they don't get something that they want, somebody should explain to them why they're not getting what they want, rather than just saying, oh, well, thanks for your advice, we're gonna do something else. Okay, that's, that's where I am at this point, thank you.
I have, Mr. Montalvo?
I'm sorry. I just, I want to make it public that I want to congratulate the music department for a job well done regarding the pasta dinner. Those kids were superb, the music was excellent and the food and they worked so hard and if the taxpayers see how hard they worked and this is the fruit of the music department, it's fantastic, they will go out and vote for the budget.
They made $1,000 on Friday.
They made $1,000, great. Again, congratulations to them, they were fantastic.
Mr. French?
Thank you.
Thank you, I've got quite a few things. Gee, Bill Powers is leaving, how do you like that?
Oh, John Austin.
Okay, thank you, Bill, thank you, Bill, thank you. There's quite a few things I'd like to kind of talk about. One is, and I'm, I'm sorry that my brother, Mr. Flores is in here. This is, I consider this a workshop for the Board of Ed. We received the budget on Friday and the only time that we have to talk about is tonight. Mr. Flores should know better than to say that should only be for the public because he sits on the town council and they actually have work sessions in the public and then they go to, out to the public, and then the public gets to speak to him. So, you know, this is our only opportunity for all of us to sit down and talk about this and there's a lot of corrections, a little tweaking that's going to be done, that needs to be done. I think one of the things I'm upset about is hearing that the Student Government Council received the budget this evening, 5 o'clock?
I just got it, I, I asked for, um, I'm in the high school, I asked for it yesterday and I got it late.
Okay.
So we're meeting tomorrow.
All right, well, here's my issue and Sue, we go back centuries ago on this.
Centuries?
But, but...
I think so. I think...
Right, but what, what the issue is, is nothing is more frustrating to come into a meeting and whether you're in a Board of Ed, Finance Department, Town Council and say, I need you to vote on this tonight and you don't even get a chance to read it. Governance councils should have had the opportunity to see this at least a week or two in advance. Even us only getting it Friday doesn't give us a lot of opportunity. So I think we need to change our time clock so that it is all evolved at an earlier stage for everybody because I think it's very important for the student council to be involved. We need them to feel that they're important and they are important, not only for this process, but for getting the budget passed, that's why you need Bill to stay. Now, um, and it's, it's absolutely a timely thing that we need to get through and it will, it will work for all of us if we do do this. I would like to either have an extra meeting or if we could have the presidents of the student councils here at our next...
School Governance Council.
School Governance Council, I'm sorry.
You're very old.
I am very old.
We do not want student councils here asking us these questions.
Yeah, that's true, we don't want that. But if we could have them here at our next meeting, give them the front end of the meeting or if we can have another date set for them, I would really love to hear how this, the, the council, here we go again.
SGC.
SGC, SGC, SGC is, likes the, likes the budget. I think it's something important for us to hear their input in this way that they realize they do have a standing. So either we have a special meeting for them or we have them in front of our regular meeting if we can do that next Wednesday, I would really like to do that. And one other thing is I'd like to go over and again, I'll go back to a century ago and Tracy always says, here he goes again with Board of Finance. But when I was Chairman of Board of Finance, whenever I had a new team put together after election, I always said, the Republican, Democrat, and now we have to say bottom line, all that stays outside.
All the same.
We have to work, in my day, at that time was for the money for the taxpayer of the community. Now I have a different role as you all have a role here, it's for the children. It shouldn't matter if a Republican, Democrat or bottom line, we need to work together. I think that the, the people are seeing a little bit of friction, but I don't really think ultimately we're, we are going to come together and make this work.
That's right.
All right, so that's why I wanted to bring out, thank you.
Mr. Collager?
Just got a couple of observations. Once I became Chair of SPD, and I'm responding to, to Susan's comments, old folks can do that. A new, a new wonderful, a new wonderful facility and we're gonna have a number of them, is my plan, need to be cared for and they need to be populated and they need to have programs in them and a thing that, quite honestly and to be fair, that has been talked about over the past year or more is, is this issue of do we ask for enough money? And we all know that we don't ask for enough money, we know that, we're, we're painfully aware of that, we're also painfully aware of the, of that divisive process of failing budgets because we can't afford, we can't afford, we can't afford. So, um, we have to find some way for all of us who believe we need to finance our education for our children, find some ways politically to come together to convince the rest of the community that there's value added in that 4% or 5% budget so that we can pass them and get classes that have 15 students in them because we have enough teachers for that topic. Because that's the balance that Dr. Sewell was referring to. You know, we're somewhat hypersensitive to, to, to a failed budget. So I would suggest that we all come together and form a coalition to figure out how to get the entire community to support a real world general fund budget in which we can support as much of it as we can from our own monies without relying on grants. We are going to have to rely on some grants, they're structural, they're part of things. But, you know, these folks that are very, very good at budgeting, Mr. French and, and Dr. Sewell who are the experts, know 3% is that number that we've gotten through. I want to build a really cool new high school, whether it's a magnet, whether it's this or that, or a facility that serves the programs we want to put here for a very long time. And then the middle school and where we need to the grammar schools. But as Susan points out, once you do that, you have to put something in there and you have to pay for that. So that's our, that's our challenge, I mean, we can't dance around it, we have to figure out together how to do that, Mrs. Lambert's absolutely correct. Poking at this is, is finding out the, the wares, but, but, but we're, you know, we're squeezing grape juice out of a rock. And I think we're doing a fairly good job of that, the, the numbers are showing we're having some effect on the education of our children, but how do we do that? How do we come together and convince all of us who pay taxes that we have to reach deeper and when the Board of Education says we need 5.5% out into the future to support this district correctly, how are we gonna do that? We, that's what we have to do. All else is just noise, we're just making noise. We have to find out politically how to do that together.
Yes, Mr. Gomez?
Yes, I want to say that I, at no time, no point, I wanted to come out rude to Mrs. Lambert, it was only a suggestion. If it came like that, I truly apologize, it was not my intention. I just saw that at the moment, we have been discussing, discussing very minute thing, very much detail and I saw, thought that it was time for the public to have, we had a long list, I wanted, as a board member, I wanted to hear from you, from those in the back. Never meant to be rude and then, and I knew that it would come like that, we could stop questions from the board, we could go to the public and then we could come back to what we had just come back. And, uh, and I want to say that we have always worked together regardless of political party and I think that I, we should continue doing that, we should think about the future of our children. By the way, I don't have any children in the school, I haven't had any children in the district and I've been paying taxes for all of them, but I do care a lot about these children. So, again, no ill intentions here, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Gomez, and if I responded harshly, I also apologize. I would just like to say that it's a bit insulting to me and this is not directed toward you, Dr. Gomez, to say that I'm not for the children. If we pass the budget here without asking all of the questions and getting all of the information as we are elected to do the taxpayers, then we're not doing our job. I got this budget, I have spent a couple of sleepless nights making sure that as much money as we can squeeze out of it is going to the students, which is where it belongs. When I saw numbers that I didn't think were conducive to that, I asked questions and the responses that I got were very appropriate, it's in a grant, that's fine, let's be mindful not to move everything to a grant because it works this year and then next year have to panic because we don't have the money to backfill it because those are questions that the Board of Finance are going to ask us. But my questions, I felt, until I felt insulted, which I appreciate, Dr. Gomez, your comments, were very appropriate and were very polite and respectful, I didn't accuse anybody of doing anything inappropriate, I just wanted to know where this money was going and how we were going to fund it in the future if there aren't going to be grants. So if my questions came across to anyone or anyone felt attacked or insulted, I'm sorry, that was not at all my intention. But in a year, if somebody says, where did you spend the money on the Alliance Grant and any member of this board can't answer that question, then they're not doing their due diligence in the seat that they're sitting in. And I think that it is concerning that school governance councils had not seen any of their numbers and I think that in the future, I would like to see the numbers a little bit ahead of time so we don't have to have a meeting where I have to ask 48 questions all at once. If we get it in sections by buildings over a few weeks, maybe we can break up the questions to a more appropriate level. I'm sorry if my questions seemed too intrusive or too intense for anyone, but I have a child who will be at this high school who's currently at Barrows and all three of my children have gone through this district and I only want to see what's best for the children of this district. And anyone who doubts that can follow me around on any given week at fundraisers and field trips and board meetings and they will see my dedication to the students in this district, so thank you for the time.
Thank you. And, and I would like to add, if any of the board members have additional questions that they forward it to Dr. forward it to Dr. Garcia and Chris. So like, when this budget was delivered to you Friday, we initially, Dr. Garcia indicated, "Go over it. Any questions, please start emailing us," so that we can start answering those questions, because she knew those questions would be coming. So just so that you understand, this is a proposed draft--
Correct.
--of the budget. An edited version will be posted online. Mrs. Markey, do you have any idea when--
Well, I typically post the proposed budget at the superend. Historically, we have missed on that.
Let's make the changes.
Have to make some changes.
I prefer that we update it with all the information that people want, and then we'll put it out there. And that way, we'll save ourselves a lot of questions, and a lot of concerns will be addressed in the revised edition, and then we can answer additional questions.
Okay. All right. And when will--
Well, unfortunately, I don't have a budget manager at this point. I'm working on my own. It's going to take me a couple of days to supplement this information.
Well, if we're going to vote on it next Wednesday, is it possible to get it up by next Monday?
Monday, I can get it to you, because I can work over the weekend, because it's going to require some additional time for me. I don't have anybody to help me at this point.
If we can get it on the website by Monday, it'll give people an opportunity to look at the edited and revised--
Yes. Yes, I'll make the changes you requested, and I'll get the additional information that people want, and we'll have it out there on Monday. But I need some additional time. It's going to take a few days.
When does the Board of Ed go before the Board of Finance?
So I think--
March 30th.
March 30th.
Yeah. But it has to be in the Board of Finance on the 16th.
They have to have-- we have to vote on it next week, for saying that they have to have a copy of the proposed budget by the 15th.
No, 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 the 16th.
The 15th is a Sunday.
16th, I guess it is.
How will the school governance--
I'm proposing that maybe you want to leave the 9th out. And by the way, we follow the same calendar than last year and the year before. So if the board would like to change that calendar, definitely would change that calendar. We did follow the same calendar last year, the year before. But what I'm proposing--
We have to vote on the 9th, because it's due to the Board of Finance, the following Monday.
Hold on, let's listen for a second. Let's listen for a second. I think if you want to bring in the Board of the SGC in, you could have that meeting on the 8th, and then you give us a week, and you could vote on the 15th.
Which means adding another meeting?
Well, you does add another meeting by saying you want to bring the SGC. So you have to-- and then we could take it on the 16th. Because it goes to the 16th. So that would be my suggestion. You do the 8th. You need to give-- we need another week, so you'll have to go the 8th and the 15th.
Okay. So the 15th would be a special meeting?
Both of them would be special meetings.
The charter says March 15th. If it's not a weekend, then we have to get it to them on the 15th.
No, no, the 16th.
The 16th.
Go check it, the 16th. We will check again.
16th is a Wednesday.
Yes, the charter says 15th.
The charter says the 15th?
Yes.
It's on the 16th.
I checked it the other day.
The Board of Finance said the 16th, so we could check that.
Well, that's not yet in compliance.
Okay, so you could have the 8th and the 15th. Is that the case? Well, the Board of Finance said 16th.
What's wrong with the 9th? We have a meeting scheduled for the 9th already, so--
Okay, do the 9th then.
Just--
What's the 9th?
The 9th is our regular meeting schedule.
Yeah, so you have to schedule another one.
Whether we can vote, if we have to vote on it after the 9th, we can see if we do that. But we might as well meet on the 9th.
So we're meeting on the 9th?
And then would you invite the SGC in?
If it's necessary--
Got it right.
If it's necessary to have a meeting before we give it to the Board of Finance.
So I want to say that the SGC were invited to this meeting. I personally sent them a letter inviting them. And I do want to go back to the SGC, because I think, as a point of clarification, I understand the value of the SGC in the meetings, particularly in the budget. I observed some of them that were very effective. I do not think because two schools fails-- two schools fail to do the process, that all school needs to be penalized. I will be handling those administrators that fail to follow the process. But I have observed some very wonderful meeting with the SGC and the principal on the budget. I saw Wyndham Center, Mr. Paul's Power had a million of questions.
Phil Powers?
A million of questions. So I do apologize to those two schools that didn't have it. And actually, one other member of the SGCs who made me aware that those schools have not presented their budget to the SGC, so.
Okay.
And we will handle it.
I think it's--
But--
Whether or not they failed or not--
But they do want to have their opportunity.
I think it's good to have them have their day here.
I agree with you. I agree, absolutely. Absolutely.
But now remember, the Board of Finance is responsible--
I agree with that.
--and the referendum is responsible for the bottom line budget.
Yes.
All right? The actual allocations of that budget are up to us, and we're not limited to allocating by the 15th of March.
Yeah, we can change it after--
We can change--
We can change that later on.
We can change the allocation as we need to, under state statute. So we're not compelled-- what we need to deliver to the Board of Finance is a budget that the Board of Finance can work on, and--
It should be as close to being what it is.
It should be-- it should-- well, it should describe the amount of money that we need to work for. So if we have a bottom line number for the high school and the middle school at this point, you know--
Yeah, because one of my problems back in the day was that if I got a budget, and I really believed that was your budget, and at the end of the year, it was nowhere representing what your budget was, I wasn't a happy puppy.
Well, yeah. Well, I think we need to meet with the governance councils next Wednesday and decide next Wednesday whether or not we're ready to vote--
Right.
--on the budget.
I agree. We could always set a meeting next-- again, after-- on the 9th, if we need to.
So my suggestion would be not to vote on it on the 9th. Listen to the SGC on the 9th, and then schedule another meeting to vote. So give them the opportunity, and then whatever changes you want to make after that, because remember, the SGC does not sign until you tell us the revision. So have the SGC meeting, and then you vote--
Right.
--another meeting the following week.
The town of Wyndham, chapter-- Town Charter, Chapter 10, Finance and Taxation, Article 5, Duties of the Board of Education on Budget. Honored before March 15th, the Board of Education shall submit its proposed annual budget the next fiscal year in a five-year capital improvement program to the Board of Finance.
Good, could be-- I don't start in the Finance Department, the meeting, they said the 16th, right? They said the 16th. They said the 16th in their meeting, so--
Well, that's when they're meeting, but--
Yeah, no, you want to go by charter.
By charter, we have to deliver the budget by the 15th.
And the 15th is what day? Monday, Tuesday?
Tuesday.
Tuesday.
So it must be to them by the close of--
Yeah, we have to meet the charter obligation.
Otherwise, we are out of compliance.
Don't care what they say, you've got to follow the law and the law.
Okay. Anything else?
I move, we move?
You can come forward.
Can I just say something really quick? I'm a little concerned, and I'm concerned about that, especially our middle school principal, who, if no one-- if no one on the board here has learned-- the teachers love this guy. The students do, the SGC does. This guy is making a difference. And I'm not exactly sure where the disconnect is. I mean, if we wanted to take this to the letter of the law, we could say that the Board-- you know, the Board of Ed didn't receive signed things from the high school and the middle school, and that the SGC saw the budget. I'm concerned-- I don't know where the failure was here with, you know, maybe Tan's new to this district and didn't quite understand. I don't know. Dr. Santi, she wasn't part of any budgeting last year at the high school. She's interim. I know she had her own issues. So as Mr. French says, we just want that opportunity to discuss. And I can tell you for sure, there's some things that, you know-- part of the reason is, is what happened today. You know, at 5:00-- between 5:30 and 6:30, we found something that we really have a question on, and we're concerned about. And we want to make sure that it's addressed. And we know, Dr. Garcia, we know that you have the best interest of the kids in hand. You've been telling us, and we know you work hard. We know it's a difficult process, but I don't want to see somebody getting thrown out, you know, beat down, because, you know-- of this-- seriously, I'm concerned about that, because, you know, if this is one of those things that makes somebody just get up and go out of the district, which I'd be concerned about because of this, you know, that'd be too bad, so.
May I answer to that? No, I think my concern is that I want you to see it as two individual cases, not as a whole district situation.
I'll take back-- I'll redact the process part of it. That makes everything better.
But I just want to--
Is that the right word? Redact?
Yeah. I think it's two individual cases versus a whole district situation. And the middle school principal came from a district where there is no SGC, number one. And as you write, and although I gave a specific directive in writing, and verbally, they gave me an explanation why that didn't happen. Actually, I put that explanation to Mrs. Prescott in writing. I took their explanation. I believe them. I just hope that they would have called before they made that decision, but I took their explanation why it didn't happen. But my concern is, I don't want you to think that it was a district situation, when it was two individual schools, that I need to have--
I think it is clear. So this is the high school and the middle school. The district process is intact, and--
Because the other--
Dr. Santi and Khan are going to be okay.
Also that--
I don't want to offend Ms. Kiss or any other folks in other schools, especially Ms. Kiss, because my boys went there, and I'm sure that they've done so well because of her. So I got you. All right. Excellent stuff. Thank you.
Just add--
Yes.
My issue wasn't to prosecute. I wanted to give you guys a day in court, so that you-- that was it.
I know that. I heard that. I just want-- I thought Dr. Garcia might be prosecuted and bringing down the gavel, and I was concerned.
Okay, thank you.
Dr. Garcia, I just have a quick question.
Mike?
You have to come to the mic now.
It's okay.
You said that you could have that budget revised for Monday?
I didn't have-- actually, I don't think Monday--
The guy that has to do the revising--
I just remember hearing it. Okay. So does-- how soon would the SGC have that? Would we have that Monday, prior to being here Wednesday, so we can--
You need to have it--
Right, that's what I mean.
I think the plan is to get it done by Business Day Monday, and have it on the internet, and then everybody would have access to it.
In a business day. In a business.
Well, I would like to see the presidents of the group each have one.
That should give you two days then to flip through your pieces.
Yes.
But giving the middle school and the high school their portion of the budget, maybe you can get them to earlier?
Dr. Sewell, I don't want to slice and dice it. I just want to get the book done and out there to the public. And I mean, then it becomes like, that piece is out there, why isn't this piece out there? I just-- I think if I get it out in one fell swoop, everybody should be satisfied.
And that's fine.
It can satiate their appetite.
Well, he said he's going to do it over the weekend, so hopefully Monday means Monday morning.
No, he said close of business on Monday.
I'm only-- you see, I used to have another staff member, so I was able to do things a little quicker, but now I'm the only one there, so I will--
Budget cuts. We all have to deal with it.
Absolutely.
I think-- people may not be aware of this. Some of this seems like, you know, well, we just got the thing on Friday, whatnot. Mr. Johnson has a calendar problem that needs to get resolved before we do this again next year. As a result of the decision to consolidate the finance departments of the town and the Board of Education, we now have a calendar that has the finance office-- a single finance office doing the budget for the town and the Board of Education--
In the same season.
--at the same time. Okay? So then there's a question of, whose budget am I working on today? Am I working on the town's budget, or the Board-- you know, we used to have the townspeople over here doing the town's budget, the Board of Education's people over here doing the Board of Education's budget. Now they're together, and we don't have the calendar worked out that's scheduled in a way that--
A lot of it is driven by the charter.
Well, the big problem is that he's so understaffed right now. These two key people are supposed to be coming on--
I have a controller that retired, and I also have a budget manager, accounting manager. The position's been open for three months, so I'm not only doing the budgets for both the town and the board, I'm also doing all of the accounting.
They hired a new controller, but the new controller's not starting until May, you know, after all the smoke clears, so--
Okay, so all I need to know is that I'm guaranteed to have this thing Monday.
There you go.
That's all I need to know.
We have Business Day on Monday.
You should be able to access it online. So when I get home from work at 6:00, I should have it.
Online. Online.
At any rate, the reason the budget numbers have been kind of late-- now, we have had-- I've lost track of how many budget workshops and budget presentations we've had in the last six weeks.
We have had four. We have had--
But they haven't been terribly well attended. I'm really happy that a lot of people have been here tonight.
We have four budget workshop and forums. We have had four.
But I think the key to the workshops is that we were able to look at different formats of presentation and agree that maybe a new way of looking at things is good, and I think that that's been adopted. We've built that into this budget--
We also talked about components of the budget at those meetings, and it's a little easier to go over this if--
Ultimately, the bottom line is here, is that concerns in transparency and concerns in communications are the result of logistical, operational failure, and that's our fault. And it's our fault that we didn't manage the system well enough so that you all got what you needed in a timely manner, on the web, in paper. It doesn't matter. So you could do your work and represent your schools. That's it. He's going to get it to you Monday, and we're going to do better.
Perfect. Thank you.
See you Wednesday. Mr. Flores.
James.
Oh, yes. Oh, that means long.
Stat the clock.
Very soon. I need Dr. Johnson--
Mr. Johnson.
--to explain on, in a basic math and in basic English, in our case, our town budget. If we pass our budget away, is we're going to save the taxpayer $120 for every $1,000 as semi-value, correct? If you had a house that pays $100, a house value $100,000, with our town budget, you're going to save $120 a year. Can you use the same language how this budget? Can you use the same language, how this budget, because I have no idea about those, you're talking a language I don't understand here, and AP, point eight, point, I have no idea. Give me a concrete number, not now, if this budget that you proposed today is approved, how much going to be in a million rate? Because you know that you're going to save 120 with us, I don't know with you.
You can't do it, because he's got, just for the growth of the grant list, is one of the things, because that's a tax offset, that's a new revenue. You don't know where you're going, your town council, you don't know where you're going to land.
We did good, we did good.
Yeah, you did good. You're not done yet, you haven't voted. But then this budget gets put together, that's the only way you're going to know, so we should not be giving out.
Not now, later, later.
Later, you can, but right now, be missing information, you don't have to tell people that you have to give up a couple of pizzas a month.
Because I, and, because the reason I need this information, and my last comment here, because me, myself, and Tracy Lambert, we're going to be out there knocking door, campaigning for this budget, and we're going to be like a two good friends, because me and Tracy Lambert, we're going to make sure that this budget passed. For that reason, with me and Tracy Lambert, we're going to knock the door, we need to use a language people can understand. I can say to people, the order budget combined, combined will be zero increase or one total increase. That is for me and Tracy Lambert, we need that concrete number, thank you.
Thank you. Motion to adjourn.
I move, I move.
Wait a minute, wait a minute. I know it's, I know it's a quarter to 10, folks, but I still have, I still have a question, which is, which, the basic question, since we're busy doing this revising, he's going to do. Are we happy with 3% or are we, do we want to ask for more?
Ask for more, ask for more.
It's suicide, because the state of Connecticut is hurting so bad, the town of Wyndham is hurting bad, that you're not, if you get 3%, we should be happy. Really, honest to God, you need to talk to the people on the street, it's not good. That's my opinion, it's only my opinion.
We have that budget last year, people worked really, really hard.
And we are the people, we the people.
We are the people.
That's it, we the people.
I, I, wait a minute, all I'm saying is, what's the worst thing that can happen? And believe me, I went through a time where seven of our budget, a budget went down, seven times to get what we wanted. But the point is, it's like if you don't ask, if you don't try to stretch it a little bit, I'm not saying make it 5%, but if you don't stretch it just a little bit, so it goes down one.
We're going to be asking 5% sometime.
Please give us the opportunity to work hard to pass your budget, to allow us, the people who are willing to work hard at it, and to, to get it, we, it was passed last year, and it really had to do with a lot of promoting it, a lot of pro. So, all I'm saying is that, you know, shoot a little bit higher, just a little bit higher, so you can give the kids.
I understand what you're saying, let, let Tracy talk.
What are you saying?
Nice, nice question, Mur.
Thank you, Mrs. Collins, Mrs. Lambert.
I said it three or four meetings ago at one of the budget workshop meetings, we ask for what we need. We ask for what we need right now to maintain the status quo. It is not our job to cut our budget and do a disfavor to our students and ask for less than what we need to adequately educate them. We are showing our numbers going up on our testing, we're showing better behavior in our schools, we're starting a rebirth, a renaissance of our district, and to ask for less, it is the Board of Finance's job and the taxpayers' job to say, no, you can't have that much, you can have this much. If we ask for 61 million, and the Board of Finance cuts us by half a million, now we're at 60 and a half, and then it goes down two or three times in referendum, now we're at 59 or something like that, we have to be concerned about that. Or if we say we need 63, and they cut us a little bit, they're not going to cut us $5 million in the first go, it will eventually still be a cut, but not as big of a cut as it has been in the past. I think that we ask for what we need, not pie in the sky, we are not going to make the Taj Mahal, we are not going to give all the kids gold leaf paper, but we are going to give them what they need for an adequate education that is the best this community can, can offer them. We need to do right by our children. You want people to start coming back to a brand-new high school and have faith in this? Then we need to give them the resources they need to get the education they need to get so these scores can increase. That's all I have to say.
Can I just say one, one question?
I need you to come to the mic, please.
The only thing I have to say is like John French said, okay, our state of Connecticut, they're talking extra a billion dollars in the hole, okay? If you look around town, there's roughly around 55, 60 houses that are in foreclosure right now. We have eastern across the street that maintains probably 40% of our people that live in this town are all students, college students, so you've got landlords that are out of town, et cetera, et cetera. My feeling is I'd love to give 10, 15% for a budget, we know it's not going to happen. And like John said, you know, it's $5,000 for every time this budget goes down. So when you're talking five grand, you push for 5 or 6%, and it goes down. So now you're going to go push 3 or 4%, and now that goes down. Now, as our budget, we submit another budget and it goes down even more. Now we get to the point now, people are saying, well, you know what, the first one went down, we're going to vote down the second one, and it just becomes, this is why when we had that time, three times in a row, four times in a row, the budget went down and it cost a lot of money, 25, 30 grand to get these budgets passed. I say, I agree with Tracy, I agree with John. I would like to see more than 3%, but I would go, I would start there and hope for the best, because, just because, there's just, there's not enough money in this town and the state, and I'm worried about our grants. You know, the states are going to be a billion dollars in a hole, we may not even get grant money, or if so, it may even get cut, and then what would you? So we've got to be very careful and concerned, we've got to look at the state too, not just, just now locally. Thank you.
Just as an option, and I had this option as a chairman of the Board of Finance, is that if we want to go in with the budget that we have and put a supplemental question in, that we would like to have an extra $500,000, that can be put on the ballot, that gives everybody the opportunity to fight for it. All right, so that's something that can be clarified with the Board of Finance, so we have an extra line item for an extra fee, for an extra month.
So, the argument is, are we budgeting for what we need? So if, well, we're working with the superintendent here, and the objective is that the superintendent has set, and the reason we're at 3% and not at 4.5% is that we're, we've done some things with health care, with workers' comp, and some other things.
Efficiencies.
That it, that have saved us money that we can repurpose to get, so, now, we're not going to be able to do that every year, right? Next year, those, those savings will still be there, but we've, we've already accounted for them.
You can only get so efficient for so long.
So we can, but there's still some things that, that we can do to repurpose some resources so that, so that we, all right. So if we're going to ask for more money, and I don't object to asking for more money at all, but, but for what purpose? So if you want to ask for another 250,000 or half a million dollars, what, you know,